The meeting of the planning commission will come to order. Please rise and follow Commissioner Duarte in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, in the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the secretary please call roll?
Commissioner Owens is absent. Commissioner Fermetta?
Present.
Commissioner Spathopoulos?
Present.
Vice Chair Duarte?
Present.
And Chair Dominguez?
Present.
Will those in attendance please read the cover page of the agenda as it outlines procedures to which the commission will follow? This is a time set aside for oral communications for the planning commission. Does any commissioner wish to express an announcement, report on a conference, a meeting, or request items for future agenda? Commissioner Spathos? Commissioner Fermetta?
None.
Vice Chair Duarte?
No, Mr. Chair.
I likewise have none. Is the Director of Community Development aware of any presentations for tonight?
No present- presentation tonight Chairman.
Does the Director of Community Development have any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda tonight Chairman.
Does the Director of Community Development have a report on City Council actions?
Yes, thank you Chairman. At our last council meeting, the City Council approved a contract for our annual downtown parking assessment with Dixon Resources Unlimited. As you remember, the city planning staff conducted a comprehensive parking assessment of our downtown a few years ago, and one of the recommendations was to do an annual assessment for the next five years to see how the parking was fluctuating, increasing or decreasing in light of the increased development that was occurring in our downtown. We completed our one-year assessment a year and a half ago, which was presented to the planning commission, I believe this calendar year. We are completing our current assessment now as we speak, and that assessment will also be presented to the planning commission in early 2020. And that concludes my update.
Thank you very much. Now is the time set aside for public hearing, and the public hearing for PLN-19-00105 is now open. Does the secretary have proof of publication?
Yes, we do.
Will the Director of Community Development introduce staff making the presentation?
Thank you Chairman. Tonight making the presentation is Alfonso Hernandez, our senior planner.
Good evening Chairman Dominguez and members of the planning commission. Tonight you are being asked to consider a conditional use permit to allow for the expansion of an existing nightclub. The applicant is Hyke Gorborkian and the business is Club DB Lounge. This is an area of the subject property outlined in black. The red outline is located at 8206 Firestone Boulevard, near the intersection of Firestone and Lorena. The property is found within the city's downtown Downey specific plan. It is located near the Downey Transit Center and the Downey Gateway Development. Here is a photo of the existing nightclub. Here to the left is the proposed tenant space they wish to expand to. Some background, the lot is 23,334 square feet. It is developed with two tenant spaces, one of them being DB Lounge and the other currently vacant. The DB Lounge is 14,259 square feet. A large portion of this square footage is made up of storage space. In reality, only 7,033 square feet is accessible to customers. The business has been in operation since 2000. The most recent approval and authorizing entitlement was approved in 2013. This was for the expansion of 2,800 square feet into one of the neighboring tenant spaces. The existing allowed hours of operation are 3:00 PM to 2:00 AM daily, and 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM for live entertainment. Actually, that's 9:00 PM to 1:45 AM for live entertainment. However, the club tends to only open on Fridays and Saturdays, 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM. The proposed conditional use permit is a revision to expand the existing nightclub by 1,289 square feet. This is achieved by absorbing the east adjacent tenant space at 8214 Firestone Boulevard. The majority of the new space will be occupied by bar and storage area. This space is not accessible to customers, and the remaining space will be seating. The proposal also includes eliminating an existing bar, enlarging a dance floor, altering the exterior of the, well altering the exterior so it matches the rest of the nightclub. On the screen, I have listed square footages for the expansion and whether or not there are assembly space. It is important to differentiate assembly space versus non-assembly space. This is because this is how we determine parking and occupancy. For this application, only 125 square feet of assembly space is being added. Typically, this prompts an increase in occupancy and parking requirements. However, this increase in, on assembly space is offset due to recent building approvals to remove assembly space out square in the building. 722 square feet of existing assembly space is being eliminated. Therefore, the occupancy is not increased and potential additional parking is not required. Here is the floor plan. Here in purple are the primary entrances and exits. Here in blue is the new space that's going to be converted. And here is where additional changes will occur. Boots will be removed from this space here. There are two dance floors, one at the bottom of the screen here, and one here, this one will be enlarged. On this bar area here will be eliminated. These restrooms that are currently located here are going to be converted to storage, and this lounge space here was the 722 square feet I was discussing earlier, that's going to be eliminated and turned into restrooms. Here is the proposed floor plan. And again, here are the, where the changes are gonna occur. And he, um, and here is an enlargement of the majority of that tenant space that's going to be changed. And here is the exterior on elevation. Onto the left of the screen is where the new tenant space is going to be at, and you can notice that it's going to be altered so that it matches the rest of the nightclub. Staff also included changes to the proposed hours of operation. This was done to gain consistency with more recent approvals in the downtown area. The current allowed hours of operation are 3:00 PM to 2:00 AM, with live entertainment from 9:00 PM to 1:45 AM, seven days a week. These hours will change to Sunday through Wednesday, 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM, and Thursday through Saturday, 3:00 PM to 2:00 AM, with live entertainment from 9:00 PM to 1:45 AM, Thursday to Saturday. The proposed hours of operation will be more consistent with other approvals for live entertainment in the downtown area. The applicant has agreed to reduce overall days and hours of operation, but has requested to retain the ability to operate in conjunction with holidays as they currently practice on condition number six in the proposed resolution reflects the request. Aside from the proposed changes, the business will continue to operate with a type 48 alcohol license on a total of 25 employees and 15 security guards. The Development Review Committee met on July 11, 2019. The police department approved the security plan with 15 security guards and felt no need for changes. Additionally, the resolution includes condition number 46, which provides the chief of police with discretion to require revisions if deemed necessary. And no other department expressed concerns over the proposed use and issued standard conditions. In conclusion, it is staff's opinion that all findings can be made in a positive manner, and that ends my presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Spathos, do you have any questions?
None at this time.
Praise sir. Commissioner Fermetta, any questions?
My questions were answered earlier. They were just in regards to if there was an, if this was an approved plan that had gone through the planning department, and it's not.
No, on the changes that they're proposing have not gone through building permits.
That was it.
Okay. Vice Chairman Duarte?
Just one briefly. The parking requirement is not changing, is that because the expansion is not primarily for additional customers, occupants?
That's correct.
Commissioner Spathos, do you want to ask questions now, or should I go? Okay. Alfonso, page three, fourth paragraph, you quoted right now, maintain consistency with other like establishments. What has been our position for like establishments recently regarding that paragraph? In other words, time of, ending of live entertainment and last calls?
Last calls had typically been 30 minutes before closing, closing being 2:00 AM.
Okay. And we have some establishments here recently that have come before us requesting live entertainment, and we've put a timeframe on them also, and I believe that's consistent with last call, is that correct?
The recent approvals we've had have been last call for on 30 minutes as well.
Okay. So, 1:30. Okay. You're staying on page four, where you talked about security being approved by the police department, and then referencing back to the CUPs on page 15 and 16. I'm not quite satisfied with the vagueness of that paragraph. Could you please tell me what over the last three, four years has been the calls that the Downey Police Department has received in specificity, please?
You know, if I can interject, we're fortunate enough tonight to have a representative from our police department. We have Lieutenant Lockner, who serves as the police department's representative on our Development Review Committee, so if it's appropriate, I'd like to-
Absolutely.
-move that question over to the lieutenant, thank you.
Thank you, I don't have data on the past three years. What I was given today was our calls for service for the past year. I know staff compiled a little bit more to break it down on what specifically applied to the DB Lounge from what they were looking at. So in the past, past year there was about 124 calls for service at that location, and when staff was looking at more, they identified about 46 calls that specifically applied to the DB Lounge. But that number's inflated a little bit, a lot of those are municipal codes where our downtown patrol, which works obviously on both, both sides of Firestone. A lot of them have been municipal codes outside of the establishment, whether it's could be somebody with an open container, could be somebody, a public urination, but not necessarily from Club DB Lounge. They could have been 2020 Drafthouse, which is also in that, that parking lot, and then to the west you also have Kelly's Bar, so a lot of the patrons or a lot of these calls may be specific where the officers just put out, hey, we're at DB Lounge. It's not necessarily there, so to the best of our, our research today, there's about 46 calls that are relevant to them, but in the past year, only six assault calls. And out of those six assault calls, we've only taken, I believe, just one report. The rest of either the subjects are gone, or the officers come out there and advise and assist them, so. We've had a long relationship with this location from it. Even before it became DB Lounge and the Billiards Hall and everything like that, there was a lot of problems with previous owners prior to 2000, and we've always been able to work with Hyke and, you know, the DB Lounge. Other things that aren't in our security plans, an example of us going to them was parking issues. People parking on Firestone in front of his business, particularly Ubers and Lyft drivers. So we approached Hyke and mentioned, hey, I know you don't control the parking and everything like that, but hey, can you put signs up here or something to direct these Ubers to go somewhere else, because there's no parking signs there? But sure enough, within a couple weeks, he's got signs out there, and he's trying to direct them to go either onto Lorena or Tenance to at least get off of the major street, so. I know historically, especially when it expanded, obviously you get a bigger, bigger group of people and the people come in. We've worked with establishment, they've increased their security. Security is very professional looking, I know he's had other, he's had other staffs where we've had to talk to them, hey, they might have been a little heavy-handed. But his staff right now is doing a very good job. We haven't had any issues with their security staff as far as that perception of being maybe a little too heavy-handed with their patrons. So he's always worked with us with that, so. Our feeling on it, especially with, you know, the 15 security guards, they go out, they, you know, they come out, when they do their last call, they immediately come out there, they try and direct people, get out of the parking lot and move them along, so. We're comfortable with the 15 security guards with the hours of operation. They're not expanding anything else currently. And if something does happen, we do have that ability, you know, at the police chief's direction, to go back to the establishment, talk to them, meet with them, and change the CUP, so we're comfortable with the way it stands now.
Thank you very much, so to recap, there's been no major assaults, there's been no gunfire, there's been no buses coming down from other areas with people of gangs or any illicit activity that would cause any concern or any disturbance for the residents, is that correct?
No, their, their security is very good about the dress code. There's no baggy clothing, no hats, no jerseys. You know, just within any establishment like that, you're gonna have some issues no matter what you do, you know, it's, it's the nature of the business probably with, you know, alcohol and things like that, but from my dealings, I've said I'm working administration now, but I've also worked field operations and been out on calls at the location, and the security staff there is very professional, they have a very good security camera system, probably the best of any of the bars that I know of. I think he's got 50 cameras in there right now. Anytime we've had any issues, because people, probably most of our assaults have been, hey, you know, the staff assaulted me pushing him out. No, it was them breaking it up, we're able to review that video. This video is very accessible to us, where we don't have to fight with them to get it. So that's always been very helpful and helps us solve, solve the problem at that point, so it doesn't turn into something bigger down the road.
Thank you, does anyone have questions for lieutenant?
Is there somewhere in the CUP that addresses lines outside the club at a certain time, for example, you know, Friday night at 10 o'clock, if there's 100 and so people sitting on Firestone Boulevard waiting to go in? Is there anything in the CUP that addresses that?
I don't believe there's anything specific on that, there's obviously the maximum occupancy, and they've got security out there with their, their clickers. So generally, they have two different entrances, I, I'm assuming that they still, their main entrance for the club, I believe, is on the north side on Firestone, but then they also have people on the south side as well, security at that location as well. So generally what they'll do, when they're busy, and they line up, they're lined up on Firestone, and they go westbound, and then they'll go southbound on Lorena and line it up, and like I said, they've always got security outside as well as inside, they have so many security people there, so that, that helps them with that crowd control.
Is there anything in the CUP that addresses that specifically, or is that more?
There's nothing there.
No, and just, if I can jump in here, so there's nothing in this CUP that addresses that. We have put them in other CUPs, and it is the planning commission's purview if they wanted to address that, and they can speak, you folks can speak about that during your discussion. I, I think it might also be good to hear from the applicant in terms of how they manage their line. So it's, it's on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
I have a question, you said, out of the 124 calls, 46 were relevant. In terms of the other bars in the area, is that number pretty consistent, is it lower, higher?
I, I know staff also did some, some of the other locations, just for example, on the north side of the street, they had approximately, this is the relevant numbers to those locations, Joseph's had about 30, BRB had about 15, Epic Lounge had one, Mambo had three, and then DB Lounge had 46. And DB is probably at least three times the size, and like I said, I could attribute just from looking at my calls for service, most of those are municipal, municipal codes. So, not, so obviously qualified type stuff, but nothing, no major crimes around it.
Thank you for your time. Okay. Alfonso, in the past, we've been very specific about the type caliber dress code and number of security, whether they're private security or whether they're DPD. I don't see that in the CUP here. All thanks to the lieutenant, is there a reason why that's not specifically spelled out here?
No, but we were hoping to do it at the meeting. And we, we were having some discrepancy as to what that number was, right? Because the CUP is being sold and us trying to locate that security plan, and after giving you the packet, we did locate that number, that number being 15. So we'd like to include that condition now.
Okay, wonderful, and that's gonna be very specific as to type of dress code, body and all that? And is there a number of Downey police that are requested to be present at any point in time, whether it's a holiday or a weekend?
No, Downey police specifically, no.
Okay. Do you feel that's appropriate at this point lieutenant, to include that in the CUP?
Yes, that's appropriate. For us to be able to have officers at different bars throughout the city, I don't think it's feasible. We do, we do, now on the weekends, we have a roving patrol, which covers again both, both sides of Firestone, on, primarily on Downey Avenue.
Thank you, okay. Alfonso, on the plans, you mentioned that there's 125 feet that are being increased as far as public access or use, is that correct?
Yes.
Alright, so if we take a look at page- Page 31. It talks about the utilization of the current space as far as what the uses, usage is, and we disregard the amount of parking space, but we're talking specifically here about dance floor, billiard tables, lounge, outdoor seating, et cetera. I know that you're proposing that we negate this, but how will this change?
The only way it really changes is, one I should add, that the, the way this calculation is done at that time when this was approved is different than the way it's done now.
Okay, I'm talking about the amount of utilization of the floor space for that 125, so ignore that third column. So here you're saying like new dance floor, right, 220 square feet, outdoor seating, 400 square feet, and we're increasing that 125 in the dance floor area, lounge sitting area, I don't get it.
At that time, they wanted to break everything up.
Yes.
If we notice the second column, they're, they're really all the same calculation. They just decided to break it up, to, to make it simpler, we just, we just lumped that number together.
Mr. Chair, if I may just jump in, I think the, the categorization is what you're looking for, for that 125 square feet. If we were going to categorize it into one of these areas, the new 125 square feet would fall under lounge area, sitting area, as that area would be where the bar seats are located.
Okay, got it, got it, okay. Since this has not gone to the review of the planning department, what can we do now to make sure that the proposed architecture is actually what's going to be built out and not be changed in the future, i.e. tomorrow?
One of the conditions we have is that the property needs to be in strict conformance with the plans that are approved. And typically, what we do with others is that if there's something different than we see that what's in the approval, we make them change it. And when it comes for the planning permit, I'm sorry, when it comes for the building permit, we cross-reference it with these approvals here, and they have to match. If anything is changed, there's also some discretion there to the city planner, it would have to be really, really minimal. If anything we feel is, is over that, what we, threshold that we call minimal, we'd make them come back.
Okay.
And Chairman, if I can take you to page 12, and that's condition 12, which states the site shall remain in conformance with this request and the approved set of plans. So with this interior tenant improvement, that's what locks them into that.
So approved set of plans, they're not approved yet, they're proposed?
Yes, they, they will be approved tonight in terms of the use and how it applies to the zoning, and the set of plans that you're looking at will then go through the approvals of the building department, the, the fire department, and even the public works department, so they're not going to change. As Alfonso mentioned, if there's a subtle change in terms of the chair material or how many chairs to a table, if it doesn't affect the ingress, egress occupancy or any other state building codes, fire codes, or anything that's occurring outside the building, then that's a, a change that can be facilitated by the city planner. We know these uses are sensitive in our community. Because they're sensitive, there's a use that we think is going to affect the, the overall operation of the business and how it affects the downtown, then that will be brought back to the planning commission.
Okay. Number 32, Alfonso, page 14, we're talking about lighting. In the past, we've put a number of lux or lumens of light. Do you have a lux or lumen light you want to include here, or is this pretty vague also? What did you mean by that?
When, when looking at our most relevant, or my, our most recent CUPs, I could not find a specific number. This was the wording that was found for them, we could perhaps generate one now. And then what, what number was that against, sir?
Yeah, number 32, page 14, Alfonso.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I believe what we have done in one of the most recent approvals is identified that the parking lots will be conditioned to meet the zoning code requirements and provide a, a lumen scale when they submit for the plan check process to verify that it will be in compliance with the lumens required by the municipal code.
What is that, I don't even, we had a, a set lumens, it's been all over the place, starting from one to four.
There are lighting requirements, and I apologize, off the top of my head, I can't give you what that number is, but our municipal code does identify that there is a certain lighting standard that is required. Usually, it's one foot candle per or, or along those lines, but, and I believe that's why we have set the conditions to identify that it must, that they must submit a lighting plan to show that they're adhering to our municipal code requirements.
Okay. We need to talk about that, because that was something that predated you as far as the discussions of illumination in public lands, so, okay. You did a good job, Alfonso, I like the inclusion of the cleaning 25 feet each way. I think it's very important for our downtown specific plan. I have no further questions, sir, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Before I call the applicant and his representative, this would be the time for any planning commissioners to disclose any pre-hearing site visits or pre-hearing discussions that commissions may have had about this project. Commissioner Spathos?
None.
Commissioner Fermetta?
None.
Vice Chair Duarte?
None.
I actually walked the area a couple of days ago. That's about it. Well, the applicant and his representative, please come forward to give testimony.
Just for, I saw somebody raising their hand. The way the public hearing is going to be structured is we let the applicant speak first, then we will ask for public comment. After that, those in favor or against, and then back to the applicant, and then the hearing will be closed, and then the commission will deliberate, so we, we will, we, we will allow a period of time for the members of the public to speak.
Evening, my name is Adele Bazi, I am the representative architectural firm representing Mr. Hyke Gorborkian and Club DB Lounge. I'd like to start with any particular questions that you may have for us at this point first.
Well, why don't we do it a little bit differently? Why don't you tell us a little about your, your side and why you're here and why you want to do this?
Sounds good.
Or we can generate some questions for you.
It, it sounds like we're, we're definitely all in, in good terms. We are here to, to help Mr. Gorborkian increase the size of his location by, by taking over a small, small space that's next to, next to, adjacent to his, to his club. What we didn't discuss is that this location has been empty for the past two years. This 12- This twelve hundred and eighty-nine square feet. And while the time that has been empty has, uh, it's invited, uh, homeless people, it's invited, uh, there's no access to it from any parking lot whatsoever. Uh, it has no use, can be really approved at this place other than a retail use, which is what the current, the existing use for it is. Uh, so Mr. Gorgon recently purchased this particular lot, and that included this small space within this lot. Uh, so he wanted to use this, and he cannot lease it to anybody. He cannot really do anything with it because it has no parking. So he decided he wants to increase his space by a little bit more and making it a little bit more usable for his clients and making it a little bit more, uh, let's just say, a, a, a little bit, uh, uh, safer for his clients. Uh, currently, his bar is kind of crowded within the dance floor. So he, he thinks that by moving that bar from that location, putting it in that new twelve hundred and eighty-nine square foot location, it's kind, it's gonna keep his customer area separate from his employee area. And, uh, it'll, it'll, it'll make the space a little bit more usable than what it is right now. So again, we're not increasing the number of occupants, uh, in the building. We're not increasing the number of parking in the building. So it only makes sense to take over this twelve hundred and eighty-nine square feet and use it as the, the building owner and the current occupant of the next door space. So that's, that's pretty much in a nutshell of what we're trying to do here. As far as the space, as far as the lighting, which you were just mentioning right now, we recently were requested to do a photometric plan for the location, uh, which was requested by Alfonso, but I don't know if you have that with you. So we did mention all the lumens that were required. We did mention all of that within that photometric plan that we submitted to you. Do you currently have that in the package or no? Okay. So we actually, the client paid specifically for that, and we submitted it to the plan, to the planning commission, to planning department. So I'm not sure what we need to do at this point for that, but we...
Keep going.
We have submitted it. Um, other than that, I mean, we would like to, we're hoping that, you know, the recommendation for approval from planning department would be taken into consideration. If, uh, there's any questions or any concerns, please, you know, let us know. We're here to, you know, serve the community and help as much as we can.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smithers, do you have any questions?
The only entrance for that space currently is on Firestone Boulevard. There's no access from the rear parking lot.
Correct. For employees, employees can come in from the back, but as far as patrons, only through Firestone Boulevard.
So, right now, as, as that space sits, is it just partition walls between Club DB Lounge?
That's all it is. It's just drywall and two-by-fours in between that.
Would be pretty hard to lease it to anyone either way, right?
Correct. It doesn't even have access to the back. Like, part of the existing Club DB Lounge is behind that space right now. So if, I don't know if Alfonso can put that floor plan back in, in, in the screen. Uh, there is no access whatsoever to the parking lot, uh, unless a client parks in the back and goes all around, uh, La Reina and then Firestone Boulevard and, you know, get into that. So as a, and there's no parking, obviously, on Firestone Boulevard. So, no one in their right mind would lease that space for any use. The client's gonna park. So it only makes sense for Mr. Gorgon to use that space. Otherwise, it's just gonna continue being an empty space with no use. So as you can see, right outside of that red area, it's just his current restrooms. And those current restrooms are not being touched. We're gonna leave those alone. So, uh, yeah, that's, that's the space. And the only entrance right now is right, and if you notice, towards the left side, that's the only entrance coming in on this, on that, uh, middle section.
The double doors?
Correct, the double doors.
Okay. Uh, I like that you mentioned, uh, the, the primary reason for this expansion being safety.
Correct.
Uh, from a business perspective, obviously, when you expand, you're thinking to, to somehow improve business, to make more money, to bring in more customers, um, has, was that evaluated in setting out? Cause I noticed that in that additional space, you're basically increasing bar size. Has there, uh, in your business plan, has anything been implemented to, um, take into consideration either way subtracting or increasing, um, e- expectancy of volume coming in or people coming in? Because if you build a bar that looks really nice, and there's an influx of business, are you gonna turn them away?
Well, actually, to be quite fair to Mr. Gorgon, the bar size idea was actually from me, not from him. Off, from an architectural's pa- point of view, I didn't want to increase the number of occupants in the building. So, bar space takes two hundred square feet for each occupant. Uh, seating area takes about twenty-four inches for each occupant. So from a building code point of view, it would actually, it doesn't make sense for us to make the bar any smaller because we would increase the number of patrons in the building. So a, for example, a dance floor takes five square feet to each occupant. So, the bar area, again, it's two hundred square feet for each occupant. So based on a building, California building code point of view, this makes more sense, security-wise, for a police department. You know, you, the bigger the bar, the, the more of an employee area versus patron's area.
I'm thinking safety-wise, cause it's always nicer to have more space, but maybe I'm just getting old and I don't like a hundred people around me. So...
It's possible. I, we get there. We're all getting there, absolutely. Now, but a- as far as, if you look at the, the, uh, cl- client area of this bar, it's not really any bigger than the client area, the current bar, custom area. So it's just a ma- part of it is also not just a bar. We have a little, uh, we call it a kitchen area or dishwashing area to the left of that bar. To the right of that bar, there is a little storage area. So it's not all bar. Uh, we just tried to utilize it as a hundred percent almost, uh, client, customer area. I'm sorry, uh, s- uh, employee area versus client area.
So when you do this new, uh, map layout of what you're going to do in that space, do you, uh, contact anyone or discuss with anyone, whether it's fire, police, on how, uh, the, the layout should be to make it, uh, uh, more focused on safety rather than, uh...
But we submit the plans to planning department first. The process is we go through planning department. If we didn't have a CUP, they would, you know, internally, they would approve the plans or, you know, give us corrections or whatever that may be. Then once it goes to the building and safety, they route it to their, to the other departments.
From your experience, though, as a, uh, engineer, you said, right? From your experience, is that something you do to, to provide safety? Or is it more, how can we, uh, make best use? Okay.
Both. Well, you know, to be fair, we, we, it's not just about spending money, spending money. We wanted to be safe, but at the same time, you know, we want to make sure, uh, uh, this type of business has to be renovated constantly. Otherwise, he would have gone out of business since two thousand and two. So he's been open since two thousand, and since two thousand, we've seen so many people come and go. I've been working with them since the beginning of times, and I've seen so many people back and forth come out of planning apartment, building and safety, uh, just because that's what we keep doing. I, I think I've submitted thirty different projects for Mr. Gorgon of the city. So, uh, w- we do a lot of, a lot of work to keep the place alive. Otherwise, as you may have heard, a nightclub opens today, within six months, another one opens better than it, and another six months, you know, he's out of business. So in order for it to stay fresh, you have to do these kind of things a lot of times. So don't, you know, don't be surprised if we come back a couple of years from now and we wanna change something in there. You know, you wanna add something, take something away.
Uh, my next and last question is, I, I asked lieutenant earlier in regards to what your plan is for patrons when they come in, as far as dealing with lines. You know, we've seen it, I've seen it before when I pass by at some odd hour, and I see a line outside, and I think, oh, what's going on? Is there a plan in place that, that you guys work with to address?
There is. And as, as, uh, the officer said, there's, there is a plan on the, they do have, uh, actual, uh, uh, security guards all of outside, not just by the door, but the security guards outside on the sidewalk going all the way to La Reina, that number one. Number two, they actually don't have more than, Mr. Gorgon was just telling me, no more than maybe twenty to thirty people. Maximum, maybe on New Year's, they have like forty people outside waiting.
Oh, I've seen more than that on a Friday night.
A Friday night. So...
The reason I ask is, is there a plan? Is there, the security guy at the front door knows, hey, if there's more than twenty people, cut it, bring them in, and let's start working the line again?
Well, that's what they, that's what he was just telling me right now. They make them go in as much, as, as fast as possible. And unless the place is already packed, they can't let someone in, they can't let them. Then they turn them away. They tell, I'm sorry, but that's it, we can't let you in. And they have to turn around and go home.
So the, the, the business plan is twenty people in line before we either let them in or turn them away, or? Or is that some...
No, no, no. The business plan is to get them in as fast as possible. But if the place is already at limit, and you cannot put any more people for their safety, we cannot just have them go in. So he would turn them away after maybe forty. I don't know how many. What would be a fair number to say? So, so forty to fifty people, once the place is already at limit, then they could, they would have to turn them away.
And there are security guards from the door going all the way down to La Reina?
All the way to La Reina.
Or spars in between?
Correct.
Okay. Alright. That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Ferreira?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, I know this is gonna go to the planning and fire department and all that. Can you point out the entrance and the exits of this establishment?
Currently, uh, Alfonso actually said that there are three exits, but i- in reality, it's, this is the main entrance right now, which is also served as an exit. This is another exit right here. This is another exit right here. And then this is another exit right here. So we actually have four exits and one main entrance. Now, employees can come in from this door right here, or they can come in from this door right here. But the main exits are one, two, three, four.
Okay.
I, actually, five. I'm sorry, I missed this one right here. That's the fifth one.
So my question to you as the professional architect, is that door in the right direction?
This one? Yes, if you notice, it swings out.
On the back.
Oh, this one right here?
Nope, one down.
This one?
Yep.
That's not an actual patron exit.
So you call it an exit?
Well, uh, uh, what I'm saying is, these are the legal exits, which required exit for a building this size with the number of occupants is two exits. We currently have four. So this is an additional exit, which is not, doesn't need to meet code because it's not actually, uh, a, an exit for employ- for, for, uh, for patrons.
Perfect.
So this, yeah, if you notice, these are all swinging out. This one, this one, this one, they're all swinging out. These are the four exits that are being used right now. And only required by code is, once you go over fifty occupants, you need a second exit. And once you go over five hundred occupants, then you would need a third exit, so which we have right now, four at this point.
Remind me the, and I'm, this has nothing to do, this is just for my knowledge. Exiting through a, another room to get to an exit, is that allowed?
No.
Would that be considered?
This is an exit corridor. You can exit to a, through an exit corridor, but not, not through a room. That's why I said this one is not a required exit. This one is, cause this is an exit corridor. And then this is an open area, and this is an open, this is an exit corridor right here. And this is an exit corridor right here.
Thank you.
Yeah, so there are exit corridors and there are rooms. So you cannot, but you're right, that's definitely in the building code. You cannot exit through a room to get to an exit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Duarte, any questions?
So when we're looking at the plan, uh, the smoke shop there, it has an entrance. Uh, is that gonna be sealed off?
No, well, this exit's gonna stay there. It's just as an exit for an employees, but no clients would ever come in. Actually, the plan is to black out these glasses because we don't want people seeing a kitchen or a dishwashing area from Firestone Boulevard. So these glasses right here are gonna stay as just black glass, including the, the, uh, the door.
Okay. Uh, so is it gonna be, the frontage, the way it is now, um, is it gonna be the same style? The smoke shop sign, I'm assuming it's coming down, and, uh...
Correct.
So you're just gonna black out those windows and, and in... What, what's gonna happen to the front of the smoke shop?
Let me have Alfonso just move to the front elevation, and I will discuss that with you. We're making a couple of changes right here. So if you notice here, on the right side, on the eighty-two oh-six Firestone Boulevard, there's a little curb right here. It's about a four inch, four and a half inch curb that has stacked stone in it currently. And to keep it consistent with this, we're gonna build the same curb right here. So we're replacing all this glass with new glass and doing this curb right here. And then we're gonna keep this door just an exit for employees, in case if they need to exit, uh, as an emergency exit for them. But it's not an employee, it's not a patron exit. Uh, as far as the looks, as you can see, we're gonna keep it consistent with the same type of stacked stone here. We're gonna add the same architectural features that the place has right here. We're gonna put them on here as well. Uh, we're gonna try to keep the same kind of molding, the same color combination. So it'll, it'll be very consistent with this right now. Versus, I mean, if you wanna see a, uh, a current, uh, picture of it, uh, which Alfonso had earlier, it's, uh, doesn't, doesn't look like the, belongs to the building.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
Crystal, is what you just said in the plans to be submitted?
There is a condition in the proposed resolution that identifies, um, it has to maintain consistency with the plans that are included as part of this report, and I can find that number for...
You know, what I'm saying is, he, I like this idea. I didn't see that on here. Maybe it didn't look hard enough. Is it in here?
Yes, um, the plan sheet A dash three point one, um, show the proposed elevations. And that is something that staff has worked with the applicant as part of this review to ensure that the frontage will be consistent with the rest of the building.
It's there. Okay, thank you. Okay, got it. I like that.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No further.
I have no further questions for you, sir. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Has there been any correspondence, either in favor or opposition?
Yes, a letter was placed on the dais for you, um... It was from, so currently, they have a parking agreement with a neighboring property.
This is what you're talking about?
Yes, sir. That is it.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm looking for the address of that other property. They have a parking agreement with the other property. It was a condition for a previous condis- uh, previous CUP that they had for sixty-eight additional parking spaces. On a letter was sent to us on last Friday, I believe, on stating their, their, uh... I'm sorry, how do I say it? Their support of the project on, but also with their displeasure with the parking agreement being in place. So it just describes that.
Where's the letter?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, it appears that the bulk of the letter was included as, um, it was incorporated into the body of an email, um, where all of these attachments were included with it. I can read it into the record right now for the planning commission and for the public. It reads, "Mr. Hernandez, I am council fore and managing member of Downey Dewop LLC, the owner of eighty-one twenty-four dash eighty-one forty Firestone Boulevard, APN six-two-five-five dash zero-zero-one dash zero-one-zero. Downey Dewop LLC acquired eighty-one twenty-four through eighty-one forty Firestone Boulevard on August nineteenth, twenty nineteen pursuant to the attached grant deed. The attached notice of public hearing was first brought to my attention by an email from the prior owner of our property below the night before Thanksgiving, less than forty-eight hours ago. We are writing to voice our support to this CUP application as we desire that Mr. Gorgion be granted the right to expand his operations because just like us and all other property owners and users on Firestone Boulevard, we believe that the Firestone Boulevard gateway area is in great need of new and expanded businesses of all sorts being opened for operation in as many street front spaces as possible. The large gaps created by vacancies on Firestone Boulevard are scars upon Firestone Boulevard, which are slow to heal. Mr. Gorgion seems like a good operator, and his club, DB Lounge, appears to us to be run in a safe and responsible manner. We hope to soon be joining Mr. Gorgion in creating a number of new and vibrant tendencies along Firestone Boulevard. However, we do need to address the effect of the current CUP application and the increased parking requirements for the potentially expanded Club DB Lounge upon the shared parking agreement, which was entered into at the direction of your office by the applicant in two thousand and twelve with an individual Salvatore Sabatino, a copy of which is attached, which relates to the rights of the applicant to satisfy a prior issued CUP in two thousand and twelve, to satisfy his parking requirements by parking on our property eighty-one twenty-four through eighty-one forty Firestone Boulevard. Two sections of the shared parking agreement will need to be considered by the city at this time. Section two point two of the shared parking agreement provides that Mr. Gorgion guarantees that there will be no substantial alteration in his Club DB Lounge use that will create a greater demand for parking beyond the licensed sixty-eight parking spaces. Clearly, the current CUP application seeking to expand his Club DB Lounge into an adjacent one thousand two hundred and eighty-nine square feet will create a greater demand for parking, thereby creating a breach of the shared parking agreement. Section three of the shared parking agreement provides that the shared parking agreement may terminate if the city of Downey determines that the shared parking is no longer required or approves replacement parking. On or about July thirty-first, twenty nineteen, I inquired with the Director of Community Development of the City of Downey, Mr. Aldo Schindler, regarding parking requirements for the Club DB Lounge. Mr. Schindler informed me that the Club DB Lounge could simply purchase an unlimited number of replacement parking spaces in perpetuity from the City of Downey by way of paying a two hundred dollar per parking space annual fee with regard to the sixty-eight parking spaces at our property. This would mean thirteen thousand six hundred dollars annually, which is an increase of only two thousand eight hundred dollars over the ten thousand eight hundred dollar annually which Mr. Givorkian already pays under the shared parking agreement. As Mr. Schindler is aware, my partners and I are in the process of redeveloping our property with all new tenants. The shared parking agreement serves to create a problem for the redevelopment of our property in that it creates great uncertainty for us and our prospective tenants and lenders regarding parking demand and use on our property's available parking spaces. In turn, if our redevelopment is stymied, then the development of the Firestone Boulevard gateway area desired by the City of Downey will be stunted, at least as to the block upon which our property is situated. The current CUP application creates an opportunity for the City of Downey to undo a harm done seven years ago to a neighboring property and its potential for future redevelopment. During our sale escrow in July twenty nineteen, Mr. Sabatino informed me and my partners that he had no recollection or understanding that he had signed any agreement which would create a shared parking agreement which would cloud title and create a problem and uncertainty in perpetuity. In fact, Mr. Sabatino thought he simply had a handshake agreement with Mr. Givorkian, which could be terminated at any time. Mr. Sabatino's family members, who were co-members of the owner of our property in two thousand twelve Sabatino Centers LLC, were in fact shocked to learn of the very existence of the recorded shared parking agreement for the first time in July twenty nineteen and informed us that Mr. Sabatino was elderly and confused and had no authority to sign the shared parking agreement in his individual capacity as he wasn't the owner of the property at the time it was signed, Sabatino Centers LLC was. Accordingly, we hereby request that the City of Downey condition any approval of CUP application PLN nineteen dash zero-zero-one-zero-five upon a termination of the shared parking agreement based on, one, the expansion of the Club DB Lounge creating a greater demand for parking, which will constitute a breach of section two point two of the shared parking agreement. Two, a determined, a determination by the City of Downey that the shared parking is no longer required under the shared parking agreement. And three, an approval by the City of Downey of replacement parking for the shared parking agreement sixty-eight parking spaces. Thank you for your time in reviewing the facts and documentation we have provided above and attached for your consideration, um, above our request. Please, P.S., please change the address records in the planning department to address the below so that we receive mailings from your office timely in the future, thank you. And they provide their address as Downey Dewop LLC, one zero five seven three West Pico Boulevard, Suite two-one-eight, Los Angeles, California nine zero zero six four, signed Scott Silver, Silver Law Offices, Inc., and he provides a phone number.
Thank you for that. Have there been any other correspondences?
No other correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this application? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, uh, Downey Planning Commission, my name is Jorge Tovar. I'm a founder of the, uh, Downey Community Facebook page, Downey Firewatch. And, um, I'm here representing my commi- my page members, um, as to, um, things we've, uh, posted on the page as a community regarding, uh, DB Lounge. I've, uh, experienced, uh, DB Lounge's, um, heavy-handedness firsthand. It's, uh, unwarranted, unnecessary. We believe that that could be a cause to, to the charge of, of, uh, misconduct by their, their customers and Downey residents and what's cau- maybe what's causing all the trouble around the area and the things that we post and, and complain about on there. Uh, we think that perhaps, uh, uh, it requires a new approach as to how they're, uh, conducting, um, their business, you know, with their customers and things, if, if that's, you know, possible to state. I was not know, aware there was forty-six calls about the lounge recently, or in the past months, and, uh, that's, that's a hu- very high amount for any one business. Uh, my questions to, to DB Lounge is, you know, have they taken any steps to, to plan for a new approach and to train their staff and to make that a part of this, um, uh, planning proposal that they have? To make that training and, and, and those steps to take to, to, to improve their customer service and the way they're treating their customers, which is, uh, the heavy-handedness is, is, uh, again, it's unwarranted, it's, uh, unnecessary, and at times, I mean, it's, you know, you question, like, I question, why am I being treated that way, I'm here trying to, you know, there was, there was a, a boxing match, the boxing match is over. I'm like, yeah, I'm standing around, okay, it's over. Then suddenly, these big tough guys start to push you out very aggressively. I'm like, you know, let me know, and it's, it's over, you know, have some kind of approach better to treat, uh, someone, people are not, um, they don't like to be treated that way, you have to treat your customers, you know, in a better manner. That was the first and the last time I, I attended, or, uh, was a customer of DB Lounge, probably about two or three years ago. Um, I'm a twenty-plus year Downey resident, here for a long time. I've seen the city change and grow and, and, um, you know, I'm aware of, of, uh, of its transition. The way, I'm, I'm also a business owner. And I believe that the way a business, um, the way a business's customers act in their establishment is a reflection on the business. So, you know, that's why I, I believe that this heavy-handedness is adding to people's irritation. So maybe they're acting out, you know, doing crazy things, you know, urinating, causing, you know, violence or disruptions, things like that. Which is all that goes on there is, from what I've noticed and, and also from what our posts, uh, reflect. Also, um, I'm concerned because if they're gonna add any more space, that means there's addition of more people. And, and it requires more control, right? More control, uh, more control of the noise levels, the crowds, so I'm concerned, is that gonna add to the already, you know, adverse conditions that do happen around that, that area? You know, is, are we gonna get, you know, a hundred and forty-six calls next year? You know, what's, what's gonna happen? So, um, also, um, uh, the noise levels are, have they put in their plan to, to include like, things like s- sound dampening? So as to decrease the noise levels going out and disturbing other, uh, neighboring businesses, uh, the neighborhood?
I'd like to thank you very much, your time has expired. Appreciate your comments.
If, if they could add that into the plan?
Thank you for your comments.
For their growth as well, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak either in favor or in opposition? If so, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is, uh, Jonathan Sassofer. Uh, my address is four-four-two South Doheny Drive, Beverly Hills, California nine oh two-one-one. Uh, and I'm one of the members of, uh, the ownership of eighty-one twenty-four through eighty-one forty. I'd just like to speak again in support of our, uh, the project. We believe that, you know, the expansion of DB Lounge will be positive for the Firestone Gateway area. Um, but we would, I would like to reiterate the letter sent by my attorney, Mr. Silver, uh, that we do believe that the expansion will add some uncertainty to the parking situation. And given the past history of how the parking, uh, agreement was entered into, we think that it would be beneficial to condition the, uh, conditional use permit upon, uh, Mr. Givorkian, uh, obtaining parking waivers from the city, which will increase his cost very minimally, but reduce the uncertainty to our project and the use of our parking lot, uh, and hopefully make all parties happy, thank you.
Thank you for coming, sir, I thank you for coming. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak either in favor or opposition? Does the applicant wish to have rebuttal time?
Yes, and in regards to the first gentleman that came in, um, Club DB Lounge hasn't hosted a boxing match since two thousand twelve. We've had other, uh, conditional use permits that have been approved since two thousand twelve. And, uh, so I, I don't know which situation the gentleman was speaking of, but, uh, yeah, we don't have those kind of, he doesn't have those kind of, uh, uh, events happen anymore. So, that's, just to give you an idea, I'm not sure where, where this comment came from, but, yeah, that, that's not, that's not the case. And the other thing we wanted to talk about is as far as, uh, the, the parking agreement with the next door property is, uh, uh, we would like to have a discussion about these parking agreements, but that's something that the owners of the property should discuss in a separate matter. This has nothing to do with the CUP at this point, since the CUP is not suggesting for any increase of occupants. So I just wanna suggest that we have this discussion outside of this matter, outside of this planning commission. And once we do come to an agreement, as the two owners do, they present it to the planning department and have the planning department, uh, present that to you as well, if we need to make any modifications to the CUP at that point. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir, we're gonna take a five-minute break, uh, ten-minute break. We're back on record, speak about, uh, this, um, email notice of, uh, parking and what we, if any, any action needs to be taken by the planning commission.
So, uh, with respect to the shared parking agreement and the issues between the na- the, the DB Lounge owners and the neighboring, uh, property owners with respect to the shared parking agreement, we see that as a civil matter, city's not a party to the, to the agreement, um, other than to make sure that either the shared parking agreement stays in place, or, or if the agreement's going to be terminated, that there's al- alternate, um, parking provided to supplant what's been lost under the shared parking agreement. Outside of that, this is a private civil matter between two property owners. I do wanna note that, um, even though there's been an increase in square footage, the parking, um, requirements have remained the same. There is no additional parking requirements being, uh, required by the city. So I do wanna make, make note of that, um, to correct some comments made earlier. Otherwise, I think that it is just to focus on the project in front of you. The shared parking agreement issues is a separate civil matter between the two property owners.
Thank you for your opinion, we appreciate it immensely. Okay, does the planning staff have a recommendation?
Yes. Staff recommends the planning commission adopt conditional use permit PLN dash nineteen dash zero-zero-one-zero-five, thereby rescinding resolution number thirteen dash two-eight-three-two and allowing the addition of one thousand two hundred and eighty-nine square feet to an existing nightclub.
The hearing on PLN dash one-nine dash zero-zero-zero-five-four is now closed. Now it's time for Planning Commission discussion. Commissioner Spathos, please take us down the road.
I like what they're, uh, what they came with today, I think it's a, I like the fact that he mentioned this is, the, the increase in size is primarily for safety reasons, and I agree. I mean, a business always wants to grow and bring in more customers, but you can only bring in so many people before it starts getting uncomfortable and it affects your business, so I think, I think it's, uh, it's good, it was presented well. I do agree with you on some things, I think, uh, lighting should be somehow implemented, uh, in the CUP, whether it's with lumens, whether it's, uh, put in certain areas or places. I think that would be something to include in this new, uh, condition, in this new CUP. And also, you know, uh, maybe we can discuss it, but somehow addressing something about the line or gathering on Firestone Boulevard. And obviously, that's a business thing that they know how to run and they know how to work, but I think it's up for discussion, it's something to consider, do we want a hundred people on Firestone Boulevard? Whether it's for safety, whether it's for, you know, aesthetics, whatever the case may be, I think it's something we can think about and discuss. That's really all I had. They're operating, uh, a, a nice business, it seems to be doing well. Those are my thoughts.
Okay, noted, we'll talk about photometrics separately and count, uh, crowd control. Commissioner Ferreira?
I'm very similar to Jimmy's, uh, reply, I think this project will, um, create, uh, better space inside the, the lounge, um, as well as, um, beautifying the facade by removing the, the empty smoke shop and actually, um, including a part of the DB Lounge. It's an improvement to Firestone Boulevard. I have no major concerns, uh, with this project and, uh, I think it's, uh, it helps with the safety of the, the, uh, of their c- customers that'll be inside the f- the, the lounge. No issues.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Duarte, anything you wanna bring up for, for the discussion?
Uh, you know, just when I look at this project, I think, um, to me, this is m- more just the, uh, added storage space, not really occupancy, which I think that lends to the safety, uh, of the, uh, actual, uh, business here. So there are no major concerns. For me, I do like that the facade, um, is gonna be changed, that the smoke shop, the mirrors are gonna be, uh, darkened, and, uh, they'll have a, a new facade there. Um, I think some of the stuff that, uh, could be up for discussion, uh, I agree with the Commissioner Spathos is, you know, maybe the line control, the illumination. Um, and I know just recently, I think, some of these businesses, we've talked about, uh, just pa- uh, trash debris pickup in the general vicinity, in the front. Um, but other than that, um, you know, I congratulate the business here, it's, it's, uh, it's growing, expanding. And I do like that, uh, you know, in terms of the lieutenant saying he has a really good working relationship with this building, the building owners, um, is one thing that kinda alleviates any concerns about, uh, the increased size. So, you know, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, sir. Alright, so we'll go ahead and discuss that now. We talked about photometrics, I think it's very important to have consistent illumination, especially in our downtown area. You know, uh, a little amiss that we didn't get the actual, uh, photometrics that were paid for by the applicant. But, um, I'm, I'm sure that we're gonna look at that in quite some detail and make it as bright and as luminous without any devoid of any dark spots or errors that might, uh, lead to, uh, crime or any liabilities for either them or us. Correct? So we'll go ahead and add the CUP, the, the illumination- So we'll go ahead and add the CUP, that the illumination will be part of the CUP.
That's correct. If it's the planning commission's desire, we can add a condition that reads a photometric plan must be included as part of the plan check submittal to the building department. The illumination plan must clearly indicate all parking areas will provide adequate lighting for safety of patrons in the surrounding area.
What's around there? Do you mean the Lorena and Firestone quarters?
Correct. The, the parking area immediately adjacent to the, the rear of the business.
Okay. So the adjacent area to me means Firestone, side, side wall of Lorena and the parking.
We can add additional language to specify that the outdoor areas along Firestone, Lorena through into the parking behind the establishment.
You guys want to discuss, is that sufficient for us to make a motion?
I, I think it's sufficient, but I also, maybe we can even include, I don't know if they use part of that parking, but there's a Downey Depot back there that's really dark after hours. I think the buses pull in there.
Yeah, I believe that's, that's city property actually, and we can get with our Parks and Rec Department who manages that facility to see if we can improve the lighting back there.
Would be a good idea.
Yeah, I think, I think if it's not directly related to the functionality of the business, then we should probably leave that alone for now and like Aldo said, move on on a different venue. Okay. So we in agreement that we're gonna include this as a new CUP motion? Okay. We talked about crowd control. You know, you're right. I've been up and down that street. In fact, about three years ago, I think one of the commissioners had a discussion about their inability to traverse Firestone Boulevard on the DB side because it was, there was no place where they actually walk on the street. So I think crowd control has been an issue. I've passed by there and I've seen, you know, in non-holidays, evenings, crowds that are in bulk. In other words, they're not linear, they're not organized, they're kind of a mass. Whether they've been called to the police department or not is irrelevant. It's still a safety issue. And I think that now is the appropriate time to consider discussing what can we do in order to ensure that the, the masses are not going to be dissuaded from coming in or lining up, or actually encouraged to line up in orderly fashion. So I'm willing to discuss that and see if it's appropriate for a CUP.
If the chair would like, because the discussion came up, I have some of the CUPs from other businesses. One of the adjacent businesses is Draft House 2020. And they have a similar condition that we can incorporate into this approval as well. The condition reads, customer queuing at Firestone Boulevard shall be kept against the building and shall not block accessibility on the public sidewalk. The use of temporary queue line rope is permitted, subject to the approval of the planning division and the police department.
Is that Commissioner Spathos, what you were considering?
I think it's good. It's very general. But I think it, being in there is better than not having it in there at all. So if we agree with it, that's fine. We want the business to be comfortable and attract people and bring people in. Just keep it under.
So let's go back to general. Is it too general? Do you want something more specific? If so, what would you like?
I think it's a good start. I would have liked to put some type of parameter on it other than if they want to put, you know, ropes on it. I like the fact that they're keeping it up against the wall and making sidewalks accessible for people to walk by, even though I don't think, you know, there's a lot of foot traffic besides people going to the DB Lounge on Firestone at 11 o'clock. But I think it's sufficient unless you guys have any other ideas. Can you, can you repeat it for me one more time just to?
The condition reads, customer queuing at Firestone Boulevard shall be kept against the building and shall not block accessibility on the public sidewalk. The use of a temporary queue line rope is permitted, subject to the approval of the planning division and police department.
So the, one of the other questions that was brought up was the number of patrons lining up. Is there a fire police code that limits the amount of people that can be lining up either single file or double without causing a public safety issue?
No, we're not familiar with one. The intent of managing, managing queuing is what you heard in the sample condition. And that is to allow access on the sidewalk when there's queuing. And it can be no different than queuing for a movie opening that occurs at six o'clock in the afternoon on, in the summertime. And it's just managing the queuing so that you can continue to have access, specifically ADA access in that public right of way.
So perhaps what's missing here is ADA, make sure it's ADA compliant access at all times. Would that be okay with you, Commissioner Spathos?
I think that's a good addition to put onto it without putting in a number, because I think putting in a number would really restrict the, the business owner. You know, if you say 50 people or 100 people, I think that's good. Make it ADA accessible. That way they leave four feet on the sidewalk. You mentioned something earlier, which is, you know, rather than having a bulk of people, I think they do a good job of that. There's a line. My whole thing is we want that line to move and not be, all right, let's keep the line out here to bring people into our club and make it seem like it's a big party. Which is fine. It is, but as long as it's under control and safe, I think it's good. Maybe we can throw in the ADA.
So is that something you get, everybody wants to put as a whole motion?
Sure, whole motion for it.
Well, not now, but okay. We talked about security guard specifics. In previous CUPs, those most recent of note, we've been very specific. Licensed, bonded, colors of T-shirts, a number of times they're gonna be there, either with or without conjunction of DPD being present. Could we see some language, proposed language on that again, please?
Well, to be clear, where we've gone specific on the, the number of security personnel is for special events. We haven't done so with restaurant bars. We've defaulted to our subject matter experts and that's our law enforcement. We're confident that the applicant is going to work with the police department and they're gonna devise a security plan that works and is open to be modified by the police department if it's not working. And so that's where, where we default to and have the ultimate confidence in our police department to look at that.
This is not a lack of confidence. This is a matter of making sure we have conformity. You know, I hate to differ with you from the DAS, but I can remember specifically a particular Firestone entity that had the vagrity of, which you just espoused. And it came back and we were very tough on him and actually stayed, stayed a certain number of security guards and actually told him they'd post them both in front and in the back. So I want to avoid any, any issues in, in the future by our lack of specificity. So if we're gonna have conformity and uniformity throughout, then I think now's the time to start. And that goes down whether it's a special event or whether it's established business. And that's not negating or trying to denigrate the police department, nor you, but it's just a matter of conformity.
Then I would start with the existing security plan and have our lieutenant read it and see if that satisfies what you're looking for.
Okay.
And then default to that security plan.
Lieutenant, you have it in front of you?
Yeah, would you like me to read the
Would you please?
current plan? Number one, Club DB Lounge currently employs eight security guards and will hire an additional seven security guards ready for opening the new already approved lounge area for a total of 15 security guards during the busy nights, weekends. Reminded, I believe this is from 2013. So it's, getting to this point was several years in the making. We haven't adjusted this since. Number two, 21 and over ID check. Number three, search slash padding down all patrons, male and female, with metal detectors. Number four, bartenders and servers to stop serving alcoholic beverages to intoxicated patrons and instead to serve these patrons free coffee drinks. Number five, busboys and servers to continuously walk around the club and picking up any and all empty glass bottles or glasses for security reasons. Number six, security shall not allow the patrons to go in and out of the club. Number seven, full-time bathroom attendants to keep an eye at all times. Patrons' behaviors during the time at the restrooms and to report any suspicious activities to the security personnel. Number eight, security shall not let any patrons in the club if they seem to have been drinking prior to their arrival. Number nine, Club DB Lounge has already installed 50 new security cameras throughout the club for added security. Number 10, scheduled monthly meetings with security management and personnel to constantly ensure the security of the patrons and the club. Number 11, in case of fire, earthquake, power outage, or any other major emergency, the security staff conducts a pre-planned emergency evacuation. Number 12, in case of any misbehavior of any patrons, security is instructed to immediately detain them at the club and A, call a taxi to have them picked up from the club, or B, call Downey PD, have them detained. Number 15, there was two other ones that were, they weren't able to, so skips number 15. Security is strictly encouraged to dress codes. In parentheses, no white T-shirts, no backwards hats, no visible hats. Range-related tattoos, display tattoos, no baggy clothing. Number 16, security to constantly patrol, constantly patrol suspicious activities. 17, parking lights, parking lot lights, or state illuminated during the time the club is open. Number 18, all security guards are equipped with communication radios and earpiece. Number 19, security to ensure that all patrons, to ensure that all patrons are leaving the parking lot after closing. The last one, number 20, Club DB Lounge has started a successful strategy. Change the type of music from dance type to relaxing music, relaxing music after 1:45 AM. This has driven the patrons, this has driven the patrons to be more calm and leave the premises.
Thank you, Ted. Thank you, Ted. So, uh, number 46 then, can we change that, reflect, general, a current, a current plan, with any change, with any change traditions based on major, based on future activities or in activities?
Mr. Chair, if I may, the, the, uh, condition, number 46, I believe, does already have provision in there that says it may be increased or decreased as such as necessary. What we can do, what we can do to reflect the number of security guards currently placed, is the second sentence. And so the number of security guards shall be determined. We can, security guards must be provided and maybe, and maybe seems necessary. Again, it further states that the security plan is submitted to the police department. And should the police department request any additional information or modifications, the business owner shall submit said revisions within 48 hours.
That suits my needs. Other, other commissioners? That'd be okay? All right, so, okay. So the next one we had to discuss was uniformity among all the business downtown specific area with last calls 30 minutes prior to closing and the termination of live entertainment, 30 minutes before closing. Now, I'm sensitive to Alfonso's statement of trying to grandfather in some time for this establishment. However, the greater good of the community is served by having uniformity and not having certain carve-outs, in my opinion. And that's not to say that this candidate or applicant has done anything wrong. It's just a matter of conformity with what we're trying to establish within the downtown area. So now is the opportunity that we have in order to have everybody have the same times. So last call 30 minutes before end of live entertainment, 30 minutes before. And that keeps us from having a patchwork either for logistical reasons for the police department, fire, or anyone else. Everyone knows it ends 30 minutes before 2:00 AM, which makes it at 0130. So that's my opinion, gentlemen. Time to discuss, I'd like to include that as a motion.
Yeah, just to provide some clarity, the last call generally is determined by, by ABC, that, that State Department, which is a half an hour before. So I, I think what we wanna, what you might want to focus in on is the live entertainment in terms of when that ceases. And you're correct, Chairman, that it's listed at 1:45. I believe you may have heard from staff that the, the practice in the downtown is, is 1:30 AM and therefore pursue with the conversation.
Thank you, Aldo, for clarification. Do you guys have any opinion on that?
I agree. I think conformity is good. I think if one guy does it, everyone should do it. It might be something, considering it's a larger establishment, it may have, you know, I don't know, bigger bands, more equipment, more gear to pick up. But I agree, it might be a good idea to keep it conformity somehow. So we have, you know, something to go back and not have people wonder why someone's staying, you know, 15 minutes longer than the other guy. I think at the end of the day, 15 minutes is not going to, you know, I don't think the time police are gonna be there, you know.
Okay. So Crystal, can we make changes on, is that number five, number six, and number seven? To reflect 0130?
Commissioner, if I may, I believe that would be condition four, five, six, and seven, to change the end time for live entertainment to 9:00 PM to 1:30 AM.
Thank you. One of the commissioners wanted to make sure that the CUP reflected the blacked out glass and frontage to match the architecture color and design, I think was the statement. I think that was addressed separately. But does someone want to make a motion to make sure that it's in the CUP? Specifically, I think, was the question? Commissioners?
I think it was Miguel.
Miguel, did you say something on that? It's on now.
Oh, it's on, sorry. Um, I know it wasn't in, in our booklet, but it was in the plans here where that's where they were aiming to do and that's what the applicant said. I don't know if I, we need to specifically address that as a CUP.
Well, I think it's important if you want to make, maintain the ambiance and character of the downtown plan.
Yeah, then we can add that as a condition, that the frontage be consistent with the current, the current plan they have at the DB Lounge, with the, the little brick and the facade being consistent. So, yeah, we can, we can condition that and the CUP. I don't, I don't think the applicant would have an issue with that either.
Yeah, I agree with you on that one. Commissioner Fronetta?
I honestly, I don't know, understand why we want to put this in the CUP when it's already in the plans and they're being
Because plans have not yet been approved.
What's that?
Plans have not yet been approved.
I understand that. But I, I don't understand why we want that in the CUP.
Okay. Anything else, sir? Okay. Commissioner Spathos?
No, I'm, I'm, either way, I think it's, it's in their best interest to have it conform and look nice up front. Either way, we can put it in the CUP or not. I think they're gonna do a good job making it conform. The elevation photos that they showed are pretty consistent with what they're looking to do there.
Crystal, can you write something up?
What we can propose is a modification to condition number 12. The first sentence can be modified to read, the site shall remain in conformance with this request and the approved set of plans, specifically elevations proposed on sheet A-3.1 on plans dated, date stamped June 27, 2019.
Are the commissioners in favor of that? So we can include that as a general motion? Okay, thank you. The last thing that I wrote down here on notes was 125 square foot consumer area space increase only. I think someone had mentioned that the 125 square foot was the only increase that we're looking at. That's was aside from the parking issue. What is, what do we have in there to make sure that it stays 125 foot increase, not gets converted next six months to the full 12, 1200 square foot?
The, there's a lot of constraints on, on not changing that number and exceeding anything that would increase the open public area. A change to that would change the occupancy, which could trigger different building code requirements. It would definitely make a change to our parking requirements, which could potentially bring that, the project back to here. So right now, the, the project is recommended for approval and it's being approved because it meets our current parking requirements and all of the other standards set forth. If that were to change because the assembly area was to increase, then it would change the approval and it would require coming back to the planning commission.
So, so then is that automatic or does that require, need to be in the CUP?
That, that would be an automatic. It's, it's part of the review and it's part of the approval. That's why it's outlined.
And if I can add, it's also part of condition number 12. Site shall remain in conformance with this request and approved set of plans. So it's the plans that you have in front of you.
Does anyone have any questions on this discussion? Want to discuss for Commissioner Fronetta? Commissioner Dwardy? Commissioner Spathos?
None.
Okay. So then we've got photometrics. So then we've got photometrics, crowd control, security guard specifics, live entertainment change, and the, uh, architecture. So you wanna read that so we can make, uh, one motion on that, please, uh, Crystal?
I apologize. So I'm reading all of the different changes, all of the different conditions?
Yeah, I think we got like one, two, three, four, five things that we discussed there. We're going to.
Okay. Um, there is going to be a modification to conditions four, five, six, and seven to identify that the live entertainment shall cease at one-thirty AM for the business. Uh, condition twelve will be revised, um, so that the first sentence reads, "The site shall remain in conformance with this request and the approved set of plans, specifically elevations proposed on sheet A-dash-three-point-one on plans dated stamped June twenty-seventh, twenty-nineteen." A condition will be added to identify customer queuing at Firestone Boulevard shall be kept against the building and shall not block ADA accessibility on the public sidewalk. The use of temporary queue line rope is permitted, subject to the approval of the planning division and police department. There is a revision to condition number forty-six. The second line will be changed to read, "A minimum of fifteen security guards must be provided and may be increased or decreased as the chief of police deems necessary." And I did also want to point out, there was, um, a question earlier with regard to the attire and whether or not that was conditioned and that is included as condition forty-three in the resolution that reads, "The owner applicant shall impose a dress code that shall not permit patrons to wear the following gang attire colors: baggy pants, bandanas, backpacks, and/or caps that are worn backwards."
And the photometrics?
I apologize, I missed that one. Um, "A photometrics plan must be included as part of the plan check submittal. The illumination plan must clearly indicate all parking areas will provide adequate lighting, um, for safety of patrons and the surrounding area. The outdoor areas along Firestone and Laredo must be included as part of the photometric plan."
Thank you.
What page is that?
Yep.
E-two, E-two, the photometric plan?
Yes, um, the photometric plan for the rear parking lot was included as part of the, uh, plan submittal in your packet. What is not identified on there is illumination, um, along Firestone or Laredo Boulevard surrounding the building.
Yeah, I, I guess what this says is existing, is existing or proposed illumination. So i- is this the proposed illumination or is this what exists today?
This is reflective of the existing illumination.
So how does it propose change? And I guess you guys can figure that out. I'm not sure, we need to beat this tonight. Okay, as long as there's some reasonable mention there that, uh, sufficient with what we're trying to establish as illumination and brillancy for public safety areas, okay?
Yes.
Any other questions? Good point, Commissioner, thank you for bringing that up. Good eye. Um, anything else you'd like to say? Commissioners? So do we have a motion then on?
You know, if I can interject, Chairman, uh, it's been brought to our attention that the applicant would like to speak on the changes that have been proposed. So, um, we'd suggest, uh, that you reopen the public hearing.
Yeah, I, I would recommend that too. Um, remember, he, we need to get their agreement on these additional conditions. And so, um, even i- if there's some way to reopen, maybe we can work some of the issues out and maybe clarify, um, in order to reach some agreement, that'd be good. Otherwise, if he doesn't get his chance to try to work them out here, we're gonna see an appeal to the council. So let's at least give it a shot to try to, uh, hear, hear the applicant out and see if there's something we can do to, um, clarify or work something out.
We're now reopened. Sir, if you'd like to come forward, your presence is requested.
Thank you very much for opening again and we really appreciate it. Uh, number one thing, we wanna, wanna point out that Mr. Workin is really trying as much as he can to, to help with the conformity and say, stay consistent with the rest of the places in, in the downtown area. As one of the things that you may have heard, we currently have, our current CUP allows for seven days a week from three PM till two AM. He's actually, because of the request of Crystal and Alfonso, to reduce it to three days a week rather than seven days a week. So as a business owner, this is something really big being taken away from you. He's willing to work with you and he's willing to give you that, just to, to allow for this modification of the CUP. Uh, so what we're asking for at this point is at least let him keep his live entertainment hours to one-forty-five AM, even though it may not be consistent with other places in downtown. But also let's be fair to him and are we comparing it to actual nightclubs, dance clubs? Or are we comparing it to restaurants, bars, and places that serve food? So people specifically go out to these type of places around eleven-thirty, twelve midnight, that's when they go get in so many times. So many times you go into a nightclub at ten PM, there's no one in there. So those fifteen minutes can mean the big difference between, between, between them doing good or not. Keep in mind that really two or three days out of the week are when these people really make some money. So you're taking away those fifteen minutes from two days a week, that's a big difference for them. Uh, also keep in mind that during the last fifteen minutes, they're reducing their type of music from whatever it is, whether it's salsa or hip-hop or anything. It's going down to something like classical, something more soothing, something more calming. If we actually turn off the music, going from salsa or going some hip-hop or going something like that to zero at one-thirty, what's gonna happen is now people are actually more, less calm, let's just say. So we think that it's actually healthier for the business and for the patrons to actually keep it at one-forty-five. Uh, that's, that's my biggest thing right now is that we want, we don't wanna take that away from them. That's gonna actually hurt. This may even change whether he wants to go forward with the CUP or not. Uh, that's how bad this could be. Uh, he would maybe prefer to keep that space vacant rather than doing this and maybe just completely not do the CUP modification because of this fifteen minutes. That's how tragic this can be. So hopefully we can, we can take that into consideration and, uh, and, you know, go forward with that.
Hold on a second, sir. Let me, can I just say something?
Yes.
I, I think the whole essence that we've had here in the past is not to abruptly stop the music. But you're right, the other en- entities that come forward have stopped their live entertainment, but their, um, radio music has been on to a low tone in order to allow for a nice transition out. You're absolutely correct. So it's not that we're asking him to just stop everything, turn on the bright lights and kick people out. It's a matter of being, staying conformed with what has occurred here within the city of most recent.
So this is exactly what, you know, for definition of what you have on your conditions is, the form of live entertainment is dancing, disc jockey, live bands, and karaoke. So in order to provide that music that you just spoke about right now, we have to have a DJ do that. DJ, if you're telling me I need to shut him down at one-thirty, he can no longer put music on there.
Okay, then I'm gonna ask for clarification from, uh, Crystal. In the past, we've talked about people having just that, uh, radio, ambient radio, not necessarily the DJ or the karaoke or live bands. So how, how does that differ from what we have in this gentleman's interpretation?
Uh, the, the difference would be, um, the, the disc, disc jockey having a person who is in control of the sound system and playing the music for a crowd or whomever the, the patrons are, whereas ambient music is what's typically allowed in other areas and that's, um, usually preset controls in a different area, not with somebody who is, is controlling the items there.
So the, the key here is the ambient, I guess, is the key words, sir.
It sounds like more for a restaurant type of.
Any establishment.
Yeah, okay.
Any establishment. We're, we're not trying to dissuade the gentleman from being prosperous or go further in our community. We're just looking to have the uniformity. And I appreciate, I'm sensitive to what you said about the extra fifteen minutes on live music. But really, if the goal here is to promote his business and keep it going, then I don't think that fifteen minutes with ambience is going to do much when people have been dancing or not. If you're looking at fellowship and/or, you know, um, community, I mean, what's the difference? You haven't convinced me, so try harder.
A- again, just because these are the only two or three days out of the week, Friday and Saturday night, these are all, are only two days of really being in business. Uh, if you think about it, his business starts at around twelve midnight and is over at two. So we're talking about two hours. So if you take away fifteen minutes from two hours, that's about, uh, what are we talking about? Twenty percent of his time that you're kinda taking away. So it's twenty percent of his business that you're taking away. Uh, if you are in a nightclub and that place closes down fifteen minutes early, that's, that means it's fifteen minutes early of his clients leaving the place.
Okay.
So you, you are really taken away from his business by taking those fifteen minutes. Again, he's already given you four days out of the week that, just to stay consistent with the rest of, of the downtown area, uh, he's given up those four days that he currently has on his current CUP that if we weren't doing this modification, he could stay open seven days a week if we had to.
So, so I don't know your business, so you're gonna have to help me educate and get my mind in, in, around this? Is the business, how is the business determined on those fifteen minutes? What creates the cash flow in those fifteen minutes?
W- whether it's, let's say, clients buying a soda or a coffee or staying there, uh, uh, just the fact of being in the place is, is good. Otherwise, uh, so you, you've been to a party where as soon as they shut down the music, what happens? Just everybody leaves.
Yes.
So we're saying that he can operate until two AM, but we're saying get out of there at one-thirty.
Okay, I get it. I understand what your position is now. Thank you for clarification. Okay. You wanna say something else, sir?
So alcohol is.
Your, your name, please?
Adam Sorzano.
Okay.
Manager at Club DB Lounge.
Yes, sir.
So alcohol is cut off at one-thirty. But in this business, that fifteen minutes, it really hurt the business. And that's from completely shutting the business down. It might not seem as if it's a, it's a big thing, but it's huge in this business. Time is everything. So our customers, as Adele was saying, between nine and eleven-forty-five, where they're twiddling our fingers, wondering if we're gonna have a successful night or not. And that is one of the big questions customers do ask, can we dance till? What time do you turn the music off? And if we start telling customers, "Last call's one-thirty," music gets cut off at one-thirty, our clientele will disappear. That's why it is such a big deal to us. We would love to comply and go along those guidelines, trust me. We're, we're, we're trying to do everything in our power to go along any guidelines you guys are asking of us, but this one here will destroy the business.
Okay.
And we're not trying to over-exaggerate or trying to step over the line. It's just honestly, the business would just die out over those fifteen minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much.
So I really don't know what I have to add.
What about your name?
My name is Mansfield Collins and I've been the attorney for Club DB Lounge for, I don't know now, fifteen years almost. Um, they have always sought to work with the city and work in a responsible way. But what you have heard is some more information about how the club business maybe has changed since you and I were going to the club. And with alternate destinations opening up, LA Live, uh, Santa Monica, Culver City, the competition is pretty fierce for the business that, that hike has been operating. He's operated it in a responsible manner. And I think on balance, in terms of what he's asking for, for a variance of this new CUP addition that you want to add, um, when you balance that against the type of business he's been operating, the change he wants to make in terms of beautification and ch- changing that smoke shop into something that looks nice and appealing for the city, this is probably one of those situations where you could make an exception or you could relax that requirement so that he doesn't have to tell people they have to leave at one-thirty. I don't know the nightclub business, but listening to his manager, if he says that it could account for twenty percent of a loss in income, I don't know most, I don't know of a lot of businesses that would welcome a twenty percent drop in, in, or twenty percent loss of income. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and see, speak in favor or in opposition of this application? Okay. We're now closed again. Um, gentlemen, I think that we need to reconsider this, so I'll start with, uh, Commissioner Spathos. Do you have, uh, an opinion given the recent, uh, presentation?
Just trying to, to understand the numbers and I get your perspective, where you're coming from. A business is a business, five minutes, ten minutes, one minute, one minute, whatever it is. Uh, I don't think twenty percent, I, just, just trying to understand a twenty percent cut back in revenue in those last fifteen minutes when alcohol is stop, is stopped, it's not being served, I don't see it happening. I think our objective is not to hurt anyone in particular, but just make, uh, the, the playing field, uh, fair for everybody. And it's not to get people out at one-thirty, it's to start winding things down at one-thirty to get them out in their cars and on their way home, you know, by two o'clock. So I don't know, I think it's, you know, I, I, being fair, one-thirty is what we have, um, for most businesses in the area that operate entertainment and I, you know, it's gotta be consistent from my perspective. If it was, if alcohol was involved, I can see how it would reduce business significantly, but alcohol, your last call is already at one-thirty. So I'm trying to figure out, okay, are we gonna make that money on sodas and coffee at, you know, one-thirty, one-forty-five? I, I'm trying to make sense of it. So, I mean, those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Spathos? I'm sorry, Formata?
And hearing the, the, um, the architect and the manager and giving their side, they currently, right now, have it till two AM. And they can not move forward with this and not do the expansion and keep that business empty on the next to it and be able to keep live entertainment, it's open till two in the morning. They're reducing it to one-forty-five.
Um, no, look at your, look at page, uh, three. Live entertainment currently ends at one-forty-five. Don't mean to interrupt your train of thought, sir.
Till two in the morning and live entertainment starts at one-forty-five.
Yeah.
Okay, correction. Um, and they're going back to, so they're just, they're reducing the amount of days that they will be, um, operating, but maintaining pretty much the same hours, correct? But we wanna reduce their time now from one-forty-five to one-thirty. In either way we go, I don't see the fifteen hour, if it hurts their business fifteen minutes so much, that we would wanna just cut them back to one-thirty. I, I, I can, I feel I can be lenient to let them be there till one-forty-five, no changes. They're still reducing the hours of operations or days of operations and maintain it. I don't see an issue with what is being presented.
So let me understand, you want to retain one-forty-five for the termination of the live music or?
Yeah.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chairman Dwardy?
Yes, um, you know, I, I think, uh, the points that were made here today, Commissioner Spathos stated, we wanna, you know, conform, you know, be consistent and, um, you know, the CUPs that are given out. But I think the one key distinction that was made by the applicant is, um, the other places that have live entertainment are, I think, where it's called supper clubs, where they're restaurants and turn into live entertainment. This is just strictly a nightclub. So I, I agree with the applicant, it's, it's a, it's a slightly different, um, business i- in that sense. And I think that distinction for me carries a lot of weight. The other thing is, and, you know, maybe I didn't, we didn't hear from Lieutenant, is my understanding, you know, the one-forty-five, um, maybe fifteen minutes beyond is that usually helps, uh, with the crowd control, uh, you know, dissipating the crowd slowly, um, and, and since I think it's in terms of safety, it's. And in sense, I think it's in terms of safety, it's it's actually probably a little more safe that the fifteen minutes is extended in terms of this type of business for crowd control reasons. Um, and just kinda like the applicant stated, in terms of, you know, you're pretty amped up, there's hip hop going on or salsa, you know, this kinda. Um, and when the lieutenant read the CUP that's, you know, goes into the previous CUP that goes into like a little more classical, kinda bringing everybody down somewhat. I think because of that, I would agree with Commissioner Fromeda that I would um, agree to leave this at one forty-five because I think it is slightly a different business than the supper clubs that are serving food, making money that way prior. Uh, and you know, those those businesses usually start getting busy around six, six thirty. Uh, you know, this one here, it's more eleven, twelve o'clock. So, you know, I I I, you know, again, I, the applicant made a pretty good uh, point is, you know, with competing businesses that are just strictly nightclubs, you know, just I think from the, just the sound of it, hey, we're, you know, eleven thirty to eleven to one thirty as opposed to, hey, I'm going to a place that's eleven thirty to two o'clock. I think, you know, it it would affect, you know, a decision of somebody to where to go or not. And, you know, lastly, a point I make is this, is that I think, you know, being that um, the the point that lieutenant made earlier, that there's a really good working relationship here um, with DB Lounge and the police department. So they've been pretty responsible uh, business owners in this city. And, you know, I think we always kinda wanna reward that. And so my opinion would be to leave it at one forty-five for the live entertainment. Um, and I think, again, just, I don't wanna berate the point, but I think if, you know, when other businesses come up, I think that's the distinction, that the other ones are supper clubs, and this is just strictly a nightclub. So those are my thoughts.
Stated as an attorney. Let's add confusion to more confusion. Oh, did I say that?
Uh, can I bring something up here before you?
Please, please, please.
Uh, the live entertainment cutoff, the lieutenant mentioned that they put on classical music. Does that classical music start at one forty-five or one thirty? Because that considering when we say live entertainment, we're talking bands, right?
Yeah.
The applicant mentioned, sorry.
I wouldn't get caught up in what happens after one forty-five or one thirty. What's, to be clear, is what ends at one forty-five or one thirty is the live entertainment. And that live entertainment, specific to the CUP, is dancing, disc jockey, live bands or karaoke's. So they can proceed after one forty-five or one thirty with light R and B, classical, jazz, you know, something that's piped in. But so that's that's just supplemental in terms of what happens after that. The focus of the discussion is the cutoff time at one forty-five or one thirty of the live entertainment.
Yeah, and I think that was the whole point behind this. It's great uniformity so that we can have a city that is well-known, well-respected, and everybody knows what to expect as a business entity. So do the consumers. Uh, I feel for the sentiment of the applicant. I don't know of the business, I don't know the numbers that they espoused are true or not. I'm not going to deny them, I just don't know. I like your position of coke and and coffee. Hey, I don't know if that's realistic or not, but nonetheless, that's what they stated, so it's their fact. As far as people rushing out at fifteen minutes versus thirty minutes, you know, you can think of a of a bottle. You know, we cut the bottle here and dump it, everybody rushes out. But if you turn upside down, there's a bottleneck, right? So it's gonna happen either way. And I think that, you know, if we take a look at what are we trying to do up here at the dais? What are we trying to do here to promote the health and safety and avoid situations that we've had in the past? Where truckloads of individuals from outside of cities come in with guns blaring? You know, we need to have uniformity, and that's working in conjunction with the planning staff, with the police department, with fire, and saying what's best for our city. It's our city, right? We live here, it's our city. We need to take take charge and say, this is who we are. Let's all have uniform and conformity. So I'm of the opinion that if we're setting forth for others in the past who have come forth either as de novo or those have come because they've fallen apart or outside of the CUP, and we've imposed a a one thirty live entertainment curfew, then I think we need to stay with it. And I'm sensitive to these individuals working, you know, with the police department, working within the city, backs they presented. But still, I think our responsibility here is to not take into account individuals and carve out or do variances, but to say, what do we wish to establish as a city? What is our role as the planning commission? Is our role to move forward and have uniform and promote the business aspect, the health and welfare of the residents? I think the answer there is yes. And if the answer there is yes, and you agree with that, then I think we need to have that conformity to one thirty. So I'm in position of one thirty. As a cutoff time for live entertainment as described in the CUP. And that's nothing to say that they have to turn on all the high-powered lights and turn off the music. No, you know, it's whatever they want inside, but the live music provision that we have set forth in the city is at one thirty, that's our determination. That's my position. So I guess we have decided we wanna keep this as a part of the general motion, or that we want to amend this or?
Hold on, I don't think there's a agreement on the change of the condition. You need three members to agree to change the condition. You've got a two-two split. So you'll have to decide what you wanna do. Can we work it out? Is someone on the fence and wants a change? Um, we gotta work this out. Otherwise, you're gonna have to take action with what's proposed. Um, or um, wait till Mr. Owens comes back and hopes that he reviews this hearing uh, videotape and he can chime in, but it will delay the application. I don't know where we're at on permit streamlining, but and that would be another option. But uh, there's no, there's no direction on the change on the hours.
Can I ask, is it, do we, if there's a a motion to add a a condition, is it a vote or is it a decision that one person makes or the chairman makes or individuals or how do we?
If the if the chairman wants to make a motion to um, approve the application with the um, amend the the amended conditions? And you don't, if if you get it two-two split, that's a denial of the application.
So we don't need a motion in a second to do that or is it?
Yes.
We do.
Yes.
We're not at that point yet. What I'm saying is we're here to discuss this. Right now, we, she wrote off five additions to the CUP, right? And we're in the discussing phase, particularly in this one segment. Do we want to keep it as read? Do we want to amend it or do we want to delete it? So we're not at that decision-making or voting process yet. We're in the deliberation process. So I know about the two-two, but that's why we're here to deliberate, does it stay two-two? Does it go three-one? Or four-zero, right? That's what we need to discuss.
You know, city attorney, can I ask a procedural question? So this is one of, I think, was it five changes to the CUP? And so should they vote on the other four? Should we segment this or should we batch it?
The way I um, recall the other conditions, there was a consensus. There was no objection, so um, that that's approved, that that it it that condition gets included. On this one, though, you don't have, you have a two-two split. So we're 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 basically with what's being proposed, and you need you need some majority of the quorum to make a change or change that condition. I don't see it unless you guys condition, unless you guys deliberate more about it.
Just just to mention something, so the guideline that we're putting in, and this is for the applicant as well, it's a guideline, right? Because you've been operate, they've been operating their business a certain way.
No, this is this is a stipulation.
It's a stipulation, but it's, in other words, so we just mentioned with Aldo, live entertainment stops either one thirty or one forty-five. Their business model has been at one forty-five, they put on their jazz or classical music to slow people down and kinda get them, all right, let's stop causing trouble, let's get home, we all gotta get to bed. All right. So our proposal here is let's do that at one thirty because it's in uh, in 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 accordance to what we've done with other establishments that are somewhat similar. And Miguel uh, mentioned something about, well, this guy is specifically a nightclub, not, you know, a dinner lounge or whatever else it is that these other establishments do. I think that they're going to operate their business the same way. We don't want to to impact their bottom line. We don't want businesses losing money because of a decision that we make. That's how I see it. It's our job to to ensure safety and security and take care of the residents of Downey, but we don't want our businesses losing money. That's what I think it comes down to. Do we think it's gonna impact their business if we go from one forty-five to one thirty? I think that's the question here. Because it's not, you know, is it, is it gonna affect safety? I don't think so. It's gonna get people home faster, but we're concerned with, okay, changing this, what does it do for the business? How does it affect the business? He clearly told us that this is something that we're willing to, you know, squash if we can't get what we want here, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just provide a clarification with regard again to the discussion over live entertainment and its definition.
Please.
Um, it's it's not only the difference between ambient music and a use of a DJ. It's live entertainment and dancing, dancing is a component of live entertainment. So if we do cause um, the the hours to change so that live entertainment ceases at one thirty, then the dancing, the dancing component of the nightclub ends at one thirty. And I believe that um, is is the point that um, the the business owners were were making in regard to that the business ceases at one thirty because the dancing component ends as well.
Thank you. What'd you say?
So one option is make a motion to approve, approve the application with the all the amended conditions. The other option is to um, approve the application without the change to the hour uh, that ends, the live entertainment ends. The other option is to continue until com- uh, Commissioner Owens returns so that he could participate um, and um, he can chime in on the entertainment hour change and break any, you know, any stalemate that it currently exists. Those are the three options.
Thank you. Commissioner Fromeda, do you have an opinion on which way you'd like to lean on this time?
I'd like to um, leave the hours as proposed.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Duarte?
As proposed, one forty-five.
And Commissioner Spathos?
I'm somewhat in between, however, I'm leaning to, and the reason I say this is because as a business owner, I think to continue it uh, would probably be wise because in in all, in all fairness to other businesses in the city, I'm I'm really looking at this at black and white. And if it affected his business as much as I thought it would, getting somebody to stop dancing at one thirty, I don't think would affect the bottom line as it's being presented. That's my point. Looking at numbers, I would have to stick with the one thirty number. That's just where I'm where I'm at at this point.
Yeah, I'm I'm not a deep thinker like you, sir. I just, you know, black and white, yeah, I want uniformity.
I'm looking at numbers and the numbers.
So let's do this, let's, thank you, sir. So let's go ahead and take that one out, okay? And uh, we'll move to vote on this specific issue when uh, we have Vice Chairman, previous Chairman Owens present. So would you want us to move, vote on the four or just this one?
Hold on just a second. So uh, my hearing correctly that the commission wants to continue the application, that continue the public hearing, I mean, sorry, continue the application to its next regular meeting? And uh, when Mr. Owens can come in, jump in on this discussion and break any stalemate on the hours?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we at a stalemate?
So then to be clear.
Two-two.
So to be clear, we would present the the item to you again.
Yes.
Great. So we wouldn't.
So we can't.
Are we going, uh, are we gonna take a vote on the other conditions that they agree upon and and change those or just present it again as we presented it tonight?
Um, the, I I understood there's consensus here on the other conditions. I don't think there's any objections, this is the only one.
Do we need to make a motion to vote on those then?
We would make a, no, we would make a motion just to continue this matter to the next planning commission meeting.
And the changes that we discussed would be included in the next meeting?
Those will carry over into the presentation when you hear this again.
Will that be automatically included? Okay. Then I guess we're stalemate and we're going to table this till next meeting.
Are we, um, we won't table it. Uh, are we okay on the permit streamlining? Uh, so that would be the first meeting in January?
No.
No?
No, we have a meeting in December that'd be the eighteenth.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Be the eighteenth of December.
Okay, sorry.
I will not be present that day.
Well, it is, it is the first meeting in January.
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 January, yeah, okay.
The chairman will not be here on.
First meeting of January?
Uh, no, the first meeting in January is January first.
What did you say about the eighteenth?
It'd be the second meeting of January.
Second meeting in January, how are we doing on permit streamlining?
We would need the applicant's consent.
Okay, applicant?
Um, can I ask something else? Can we present it to them to see if it's acceptable as discussed or it's?
I I think they've already indicated that they're okay with everything else except that change in the hours. This this issue we've been talking about, so um.
They're conferring.
Well, if they're okay with the one thirty, can we, if we make a motion and second it?
Well, you, I think, if if you wanna revisit to what the applicant's thoughts are, is you reopen the public hearing and you'd have that conversation.
We don't have to revisit this and?
Doesn't, I think the applicant made it pretty clear that they.
Well, that's what they're saying, they're confronting now.
That's what I heard too.
Yeah.
Would you gentlemen like to reopen this and and discuss it again or or not? Okay, so we're reopening the public.
Again, Mansfield Collins, attorney for DB Lounge. After further um, discussion with um, with Mr. Gaborian, and and um, and then there'll be a follow-up to this. The change of the fifteen minutes is critical uh, because it will actually mean that uh, potential customers will now look at the DB Lounge shutting down closer to one fifteen, once you say it's one thirty. And that will just simply kill the nightclub business. Cause now it's actually in their mind, one fifteen, should I go to this club? Cause they're gonna start shutting me down. Because of that adverse economic impact that he foresees, and remember, he's been in business close to twenty years. He's taken it from when it was Downey Billiards to what it is today. So he really is the expert on this. We, I appreciate uh, Mr. Path Thumothulus, I'm sorry if I've ruined that.
All right.
Jimmy, I appreciate you're sharing that you you have a sense of the business dynamics at play here. Uh, in this particular business, um, the two experts are right here. And they've told you that that extra fifteen minutes would kill them. If we can't reach some sort of agreement tonight, I think my client is leaning towards withdrawing the CUP at this time or the application at this time.
Sorry, to add that, just again, that also means that we're gonna keep a vacant space on Firestone Boulevard without any kind of modifications to the facade. So that's just just to make sure. But that is, we're pretty much withdrawing from this application tonight.
So you're withdrawing it, is that what you're saying?
If that's the, if that's the only, I mean, you're you're kinda holding us ransom right now where you're you're you're, I feel like we're being blackmailed. We either do the one thirty or we do this. So we, our decision is we cannot do one thirty.
Can I ask a question? If if you do one thirty rather than one forty-five, and I'm just going off what you told me in regards to twenty percent of the business being after one thirty, I think we said, or one forty-five? Maybe the applicant can help us. So the current plan is you you slow down music at one forty-five. So just to.
Good evening. Hi, Gaborian. Eighty-two zero six Firestone Boulevard.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So at at your current business plan is you turn music off at one forty-five?
Yes.
Is that correct? Off, off?
At one forty-five, the DJ and live entertainment stops at one forty-five. So where people will still be able to dance till one forty-five. And we start a little radio music of the, you know, off the phone. Classical musical, you know, to calm the customers down, to be able to walk outside their cars. And that's where we're escorting out to. So from, I think we've been doing a great job from one forty-five to two to escort people outside. By two o'clock, everybody's been gone already without any problems with our security, with our team, with our managers. Never had any issues, and we've been operating. Never had any issues, and we've been mon- uh, operating live entertainment till one forty-five without any concerns, all these seven or eight years from two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. All right. Now, we've been giving a lot, uh, you know, conditions. We used to have twenty-nine conditions prior, now we have about sixty. That's already thirty-one extra conditions and a lot of modifications, and I'm willing to work with the city. I always did, all the respect with everyone. But this fifteen minutes, I mean, it's really gonna kill the business. Please, if you guys, if you can work with.
Can you explain to me why it will kill the business the last fifteen minutes? I'm trying to understand. Is it the revenue that's coming in? Is it the, the vibe in the place? What is it that kills the last fifteen minutes? Just to explain our perspective as a city, so every other establishment now, that's a, that's something we're trying to establish as one thirty. So it, it looks as if we're being um, uh, extra special to DB Lounge by giving you one forty-five. What is it that, that fifteen minutes, you seem very, and I wanna know, I'm trying to understand it, because I really am, am.
It's not about extra specialty, it's just other spa establishments, they have their, you know, they start their business around six, afternoon, five-thirty where they're serving food. And our customers, they start getting there by, by eleven, eleven-thirty, and they're only there for about a couple hours. We're only open a couple nights a week. So we have a lot of bills and a lot of employment, and so that fifteen minutes, so that means if we cut off the hours at one thirty, and people are gonna start leaving, they can't dance, if we cut the live entertainment at, as Crystal mentioned, they're gonna stop dancing at one thirty, and they're gonna start leaving at one thirty. So fifteen minutes of dancing, and it calms them down after they have their last call at one thirty. It's a different kind of operation compared to, it, we're only a nightclub, so.
There's no food there? You don't serve any food?
Not at all, it's only alcohol and water, you know, they drink some water after at one thirty. We've been consistent till one at one thirty, you know, we don't serve anyone at one thirty, we've been always, you know, stop alcohol at one thirty. And if you wanna cut the music at one thirty, it's really gonna affect the business. I mean, we went through, like I said, there's, we used to have twenty-nine conditions, and now there's sixty and plus modifications. And I'm willing to go forward with that, but just fifteen minutes, we wanna keep it. It's, we're not asking for something that it wasn't there. It was in our conditions, that fifteen minutes. Please, again.
Sir, are, are you saying that the fifteen minutes is not affecting the revenue of those fifteen minutes? It's gonna affect the revenue at the door by the perception of the public?
It will affect the door, and, and not necessarily the door, but people like to, you know, when they're showing up late, like at ten-thirty, eleven, eleven-thirty, they, they wanna stay longer. I mean, if you're open, some clubs are open till three uh, AM, I mean, we're just closing at two. But we're closing the, shutting off the music at one forty-five, and they're slowly starting leaving. So the fifteen minutes is fifteen minutes. For customers, they wanna stay longer, so they're, rather go another place where they can stay longer and enjoy their time, their night, because we are having a lot of birthday parties, families coming with their, you know, daughters, sisters, brothers, and couples, so they wanna stay as much as they can because they're showing up late. They're having their dinner at six or seven, by the time they're coming, nine or ten, getting ready. And, you know, they wanna come in by eleven o'clock, eleven-thirty, they wanna stay as long as possible. One thirty, I think it's, it's, it's not gonna work out, work out for us.
Okay. So, so I, I sense the pain and anguish, okay? Would you be willing to allow us to meet again in, I guess, what was it, January eighteenth? February eighteenth, whatever it was, a- and just to discuss this with the other commissioners present, I think we're at two, two. And I don't wanna make a decision that's going to force you to withdraw, or feel that we're not being fair to you. But I think right now, we're not gonna be able to come up with the decision that's gonna make you happy.
Can I, can I, can I ask a question? Can I just add one?
Yes.
So, you know, other businesses, the restaurants, the whole thing, like we're trying to say it's separate. People have one thirty last call, they still sit down, they eat. The only thing that we really offer is that environment.
Yeah.
Of the nightclub, and the dancing. The dancing part of it is, we have a nice dance floor. Everyone loves the dance floor. So, by cutting them off at one thirty from dancing to that one forty-five, that, that's why we're saying it'll, it'll hurt the business, because people would stop coming just for that reason. That extra fifteen minutes, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but that extra fifteen minutes is, is a big deal in our industry. So if we do cut that music at one thirty, realistically, people start dancing about one twenty-five, whatever it might be, and they start getting ready to leave already. In our business, now in a restaurant, something else, you cut the music, people sit down, they lounge, they're at their tables, they're walking around, they're talking. As soon as you cut the music in our business, everyone's out the door. They're, they're gone and out the door. So that's, that's my concern, is if we cut it at the one thirty, we won't have people coming back to the nightclub. We're not, it's not the bar number, or the door number, or any, it's just the whole overall number, and, and hurting the whole overall business.
So a snowball effect for the future, as you're saying?
Yes.
Commissioner Fermetta?
If I understood correctly, uh, I forgot your name, sir, the owner.
Hi, Gavorkian.
Hi. Um, it's more of your customer retention. You want your customers to come back.
Yes.
If you, if you're, if you reduce your hours of operation, your customers would prefer to go somewhere else where they can stay there longer, and take their money there. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir, that's part of it, yes.
Okay.
We will re- really decrease in customers.
Since we've got, went there, what percentage of your customers are repeat customers?
I'd say about forty to fifty percent are repeat.
Pretty significant then. And you think you might lose those if that's fifteen minutes is cut back?
I think we might lose overall customers, yeah, the repeat customers and new customers.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen, for the advocates?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to step forward and speak either in favor or in opposition? If so, please come forward and state your name and address.
Hi, Jorge Torre, uh, founder, Downey Bar Watch. Five minutes, I'm watching it now. So, uh, my concern is that, is it gonna, the uh, one forty-five time, is it gonna allow ample time for there to be a wind down for, for the, for the patrons, you know, for them to wind down? Get their heart rates down lower so they can, you know, get home safer, more relaxed, right, you know, and uh, I do agree with their, uh, playing of the, of the music, it does, you know, the calm music, it does help. Also, if, if, if they do believe that the new ti- that time is gonna uh, affect their revenue, you know, is it possible for them to show proof that it, it's going to do that, not just, not just say it, you know, to show proof that it do- it will? You know, to show proof there, maybe, maybe accounting records or something that's gonna show that their, their revenue did go down by twenty percent within the, those, uh, fifteen minutes, the fifteen minutes difference, um. Um, also, um, although they are experts in the nightclubs, you know, we're, we're experts of our, of our community, our, our city, and to, um, taking care of our, our citizens, making sure that they have their safety, you know, you know, those things, our, our environment, uh, that it's clean and, and socially acceptable, um, at any time. They could always ask their patrons to come in a little earlier. Hey, our hours are changing, make the adjustment with us, you know, this, and that. If they're that popular, I'm sure their patrons will understand fifteen minutes. Okay, let's just go leave fifteen minutes earlier, you know, what, what difference will, uh, will it make? Again, um, please know that we are in, in responsible for the citizens of our, of our city and their safety and, and, and our, our city environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else would like to come forward? You had wanted to earlier, sir, do you wanna come forward? All right, thank you very much. Um, I have a question. Would you, gentlemen, be willing to allow us to regroup on this and meet the first meeting of February, so we have a full quorum? So we can discuss, I think this is important for you and it's important for us. So if you're willing to allow us to meet on this specifically in the first week, I think e- everybody's in fa- would be favorably, you, you're in favor of that?
So, um, yeah, if we could have their legal representative come up, we, for permit streamlining, we'll need a, a very clear express consent to extend the permit streamlining deadlines, which is the deadline you have to meet to make a decision, so extending those out so that we can continue the item for the second meeting in uh, January.
No, 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 that's the first meeting in February, which is February fifth, twenty twenty.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, can I interrupt? We, I do have a very major concern actually about doing a, a meeting in, in January.
February, sir.
Even February. Uh, something very major is coming up, January first, two thousand twenty, we have a two thousand nineteen California building code changing. Which means that if I submit the plans to Building and Safety prior to December thirty-first of two thousand nineteen, my plans will be completely different than if I submitted them on January first, two thousand twenty. The code changes completely, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, just structural, everything in general changes, and they can tell you, planning department can tell you this, is a lot of them, a lot of our building officials have been going in training during the last couple of months for the new code. Uh, so that's, that would be a major concern for us. We would have to submit the plans prior to the end of this year in order for us to stay within the two thousand sixteen California building code, which is what we're under right now.
So you're saying that twenty twenty can be stricter and cost you more money?
It is. It's definitely stricter and it'll cost more money.
So it's probably in your best interest for us to book tonight?
Correct.
So having said that, do you have any objection to one thirty still?
Definitely have an objection to one thirty.
Well, we're at a stalemate, I'm, we're trying to.
This is why I'm saying, we're trying to see if we can, let's, let's see if we can come to an agreement tonight on trying to help a business owner stay in business. Uh, again, we weren't trying to do this to hurt the business, we're trying to do it to actually help the business and help the safety of the, the patrons and move forward. We weren't doing this to try to hurt the business whatsoever, and at this point, he feels like we're hurting the business by doing this.
Yeah, that's not our goal. Hope you understand that's our, it's not our goal.
Understand, but it, it's happening.
Pure economics, pencil to pen, right? Uh, what's gonna be more economical, you know, a decision now with one thirty, or decision afterwards, assuming that you're gonna get one forty-five with all the new code changes? I mean, that's, that's pure economics. I can't make a decision for you, but if we have a choice now, maybe you guys can confer a little more, we can make a other decision, otherwise, um, we're a stalemate.
Well, the other option is, as they suggested, they just withdraw the application.
That's, that, yeah. In which case, they go back to twenty twenty, coming back with all the changes out, that's gonna cost you more money.
No, they wouldn't do it.
There won't be a twenty twenty, there won't be any kind of, uh, there won't be any application.
You'll be back. You got the bill, then you'll be back. That's reality, you'll be back. No.
Unless you wanna give us a few minutes for us to discuss this between each other and see if what.
Please take your time, please take your time.
All right.
Yeah, we're gonna take a fifteen minute break.
Perfect, thank you.
We're not open. I'd like to have the applicant come back so we can uh, hear from the applicant what the deliberation decision is, please.
We were just discussing it and, and, and this is how serious it's gotten. It, it will definitely push us to revoke the application and move, not move forward if we weren't able to do the one forty-five. However, again, we do wanna discuss, we currently open till one forty-five, seven days a week, we are able to do that. So if by us revoking this application tonight, you're definitely putting us out of uniformity with the rest of the clubs, automatically, just by you letting us walk away tonight. So we're giving you four nights out of the week that you can make us uniform with the rest of the clubs. And by you telling us to walk away, you're definitely telling us to actually not be uniform with the rest of the clubs any further. So either way, it's not gonna, it's not gonna help anybody by us revoking this. It's only gonna hurt the business and hurt the, the Firestone Boulevard. Uh, because there's, there's nothing can be done. You cannot lease that location to anyone because it doesn't have any parking. There's no use in the city that requires zero parking. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, that's incorrect. In the downtown, you can buy parking waivers, so a use can go in there, and they just need to purchase wa- waiver.
Okay, okay. So I, I'm sorry, I didn't know that, that, that was the case only. I thought that was only for additional parking, but I didn't know that they could do it with no parking. Okay. So, at this point, that's what we have, and uh, we're, we're hoping that you can take that into consideration, and uh, either way, he's, he's, oh, he can open right now, seven days a week, up to one forty-five AM live entertainment, or open till two AM with one forty-five uh, and live entertainment. So unfortunately, we've taken, it's, it's taken us uh, almost a year of going back and forth with Planning Department. We've given everything that they've asked for, we've met with everybody, we've, you know, complied with everything that Police Department has asked for. And we got to the point to this meeting where because of one commissioner not being here for whatever reason, the business owner is being penalized today, because that decision has to be made tonight.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you right there.
Please.
I, I don't want you to walk away with that opinion. You're not being penalized in any way, and certainly not by not having Commissioner Owens here. What we're trying to do is be ultra sensitive to your particular need. That's why we've been here deliberating for close to three hours on this one case. If, if we weren't gonna be fair to you, we would just made the decision to kill it. All right, so we're, we're trying to expend extra time to allow you and us to come to some resolution that's gonna be mutually beneficial. That's really the point here. And, you know, you mentioned before that you felt like you were being uh, censured or bullied. You know, please, that's not true. I mean, if it was, you know, the gavel would've come down a long time ago, and we'd have made a decision. Or, or, everybody here is working towards trying to understand your business. Understand how the impact of fifteen minutes is extremely relevant to you, from your perspective. And we're going that extra mile, asking for more and more information, more deliberation, 'cause we're trying to understand and be sensitive. But yet, we have to be true to ourselves and to the needs of the city and the future of the city. That's our role. Just like your role is promote your business now and tomorrow. So we're trying to work together mutually with you. We're not here trying to, you know, bully you, and we certainly don't wanna be bullied likewise. But, you know, misrepresentations or um, anything that leads to miscommunication needs to be remedied now. And that's why I'm, I'm stopping you now, I'm saying, this is not an issue of a, a singular individual. You don't know, he might have been voting one thirty come hell or high water. You don't know that. And we're trying to give you the, the opportunity to say, if indeed he comes back, he may vote for you, but there's no guarantee he won't. Do you, do you understand the difference?
But it will be too late by then, because by then, it's already past January first, two thousand twenty, and the California building code has changed. So because of him not being here tonight, that decision is not being made, uh, tonight.
Well, let me throw out an option. Um, and I, you know, our, our Planning Commission, you know, I truly believe is business friendly. Right now, they're struggling with, with an issue because they're extremely committed to their community. Why don't we schedule a special meeting before the end of the calendar year? Uh, we know that the eighteenth doesn't work, but tomorrow, we can start to survey our commissioners and, and see what other days work uh, beyond the eighteenth and before uh, December thirty-first, and then we can work with you folks to see if that works for you as well.
We can maybe do that, but I, I was also gonna suggest something else. I mean, uh, all of us in the community uh, respect the opinion of the Police Department. We have lieutenant from the Police Department here tonight, uh, that can give an opinion on how Mister Gavorkian has run his business for the last nineteen years. I would say that this lieutenant's words should be enough to help, you know, make a decision on either way for, for you guys, and not that he's for us or against us, but he can give an honest opinion of how the Police Department feels about Mister Gavorkian's running his place until one forty-five for the past few years since he's gotten this conditional use approval approved. So can we do that? Is there any way we can get his opinion and maybe use that?
No, there's no reason for that, since it's not a con- uh, an issue of con- uh, contemplation. There's nothing here to suggest that there's any animosity or anything in the O L, so that'd just be a waste of time. The real issue here right now is, from this council, it, it, diocese is to say, are we gonna stay in uniformity with what's going on with the city as we have proposed? And are we gonna be sensitive and give you variance based on what the facts that you have elucidated to us? And that is the fifteen minutes are gonna cause a significant amount of economic distress for you. Or do you op- take your option and say, we're withdrawing, or do we act on the measure now and basically deny it? That's the real contention. If we stay focused with that, then I think that all these other measures are immutable. They don't matter, right? They're moot points. So let's not cloud it, let's stay, stay focused. You're on the economic basis, and we're on the side right now, how can we help you not lose money, but how can we stay true to the prospect of the city? That's the focus.
Let, let me try to reformulate um, the argument that I.
Let, let me try to, uh, reformulate, um, the argument that I tried to make about the economic distress and address that to, um-
Sure, open to it, absolutely.
Okay, um, when I said twenty percent and then why that was critical, it was probably an understatement, because what really happens is the repeat customers start falling off. And it may start at twenty percent, and then it grows to twenty-two percent, then it grows to twenty-five percent. And then pretty soon, he's, can't make his nut, he can't break even, and then pretty soon, he's out of business. It's a rolling effect, because it affects the re, the, the ability of repeat customers to feel, to look at his establishment as a friendly, lively entertainment facility. That's really the long-term impact of those fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I understand that. That was made clear before, we called it a snowball effect. So I understand that the door, as it moves forwards, will have an effect.
So, by reducing the one, the hours from one forty-five to one thirty, in the interest of uniformity, it's actually having a draconian adverse impact on his business and his ability to, to succeed.
Okay, understood.
Thank you for that, by the way. We're looking, remember, where, you mentioned something about the, the lieutenant here today. The reason as planning commissioners that we're up here is we directly represent our district and our city. So we're the folks who live here, who drive around here, who, you know, experience things here. Um, the fact that you mentioned you're giving us something, you're not giving us anything. You're not giving up anything, you're not negotiating anything, you're here submitting a proposal to the planning commission. So with all due respect, you're not giving up anything. You're here as a business owner proposing something to help your business, and we're here trying to help you and your business. So I think with our recess, I had a chance to think about it and I, I think that you guys are, that the position you're taking is very firm, and I think you're doing it for the wrong reasons. But with that said, uh, we did a little bit of research, I did myself. Um, and you're the only, I think one of the only establishments, whether it's a club, a bar, a restaurant, a dance lounge, whatever, that goes till one forty-five. The only one. So the city has established you as the club in town, and you're the only one at one forty-five. With that said, I think, um, with you, uh, dropping it and not moving forward, I think it would hurt you, it would hurt business owner. I think he made, uh, certain moves in, in purchasing and moving forward with the intention of growing his business, whether it's to make money, whether it's to, to improve safety, whatever it is. Uh, we're here to help business owners. Um, I'm open, uh, to the one forty-five for one reason. And that's because this is, uh, and I'm gonna present this to the other commissioners. Um, our city council has other things to worry about and do. Um, I'm open to the one forty-five, uh, for one reason, and that's, um, I don't want it to go to other people to have to hear this again for any particular reason. You're already being extended the one forty-five hour, and you did mention the lieutenant, you guys are doing a great job. You're, the way you run your business is not a question. You're doing a great job, and that's why you're successful, and that's why you're doing well. Um, but you're presenting something to us as a commission, uh, who represent the citizens. And we want you guys to understand, we're here to represent our citizens, and we want conformity. By that, we want everyone to close at one thirty. We're trying to establish something to represent the citizen, citizens of Downey. Um, with that said, I'm open to a one forty-five, to getting this thing done and approved and move forward. I respect the fact that you guys stood firm, and this isn't a poker game, and I don't want you to think that way. I think, uh, chairman was pretty clear in that, we're not here to hurt anybody or do anything the wrong way, but it has to make sense. You know, when we're presented with numbers, whether it's, we're losing this amount of money, this is what happens, this is, uh, how things affect us, they gotta make sense. We're all smart people up here, and at the end of the day, the dots have to connect. If they don't connect, we can't make sense of anything. Uh, so with that said, we can redeliberate, we can talk about it. I'm open to a one forty-five because, you know, the city council, really doesn't have to hear about this. I think when you mentioned, you mentioned two things that weren't right. Number one, you said that we gave you the three days, we're only operating these three days now. You're not making money those three days. That's why it's not a big deal. When we offered you those additional days at one thirty, it didn't matter. So I get it, guys. You know, we're all here to, to make things work. With that said, that's my position. I'm open to it. I don't think the city council should hear something because, you know, we're working on fifteen minutes. This is still a C U P, and you're still obligated to run a certain way. And at the end of the day, you're gonna be back up here if something happens, and we don't want that. We don't wanna see you again. Maybe out, but not here, right?
Commissioner, we appreciate that, and we would submit on that, and, um, and you're right, we did not look at this as any kind of poker game or gamesmanship. Um, I've been in front of city councils and planning commissions, uh, as a result of my practice, and I, like you, maybe have never been at a planning commission meeting for, for three hours on one item. But it was only because it was a genuine matter of concern to my client, Club DB Lounge, a matter of genuine concern.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
One last thing I'd like to add to this, uh, as, as Crystal said earlier, the Police Department has a right to actually modify or even revoke the C U P if this was to be a problem, whether it's this or any of the other conditions. So whether, you know, in the future, if the, if, if Police Department saw that this was an issue, they could come back and, 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 and and ask us to, to modify this. So, so by saying that, we are confident that the way Mr. Gvorkian runs his club, he's not asking for any headache, he's not going to be looking for trouble.
To be clear, the Police Department doesn't have the ability to revoke your C U P.
Or something, something-
The, the planning commission, this body here, has the ability to revoke your C U P.
The reference was to the security plan.
Security plan, okay. But that, that, this is, this is part of the security plan, was it, the, the fifteen minutes?
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we, uh, let's close the public hearing, so then you can, uh, a public comment, and then we're done, yeah.
Is there anyone, is there anyone like to come forward and give public comment?
No, no, he's already spoken.
He's already has?
He asked him, he's already come up twice.
Alright, sorry, Phil rules me. Thank you very much, we're closed. Alright, I totally appreciate everything, but it's a democracy, and I have to disagree with you on your position of the city council can't actually hear this. They're here, they're elected to hear all the opinions. We're the advisory body, and if we make a decision and it goes to them, that's their obligation. So you're not doing the citizens any favors by changing your mind because you don't want someone to go to city council. That's their responsible responsibility. They fought for through the election process. Our responsibility is to stand true to ourselves. What do we see as the city? What does, what do our districts say, and what do we feel internally is the right thing? And it doesn't matter if we're here till one AM like we were previously a couple of weeks ago, right? What matters is we take things logistically in a democracy, and not to be bullied or bullied, and not to be, you know, kowtowed or kowtowed to, right? But to look at things and say, okay, what is the right thing to do? And if our role here is to set the plan in action that sets the precedence for the city, in this case, one thirty, then that's what we need to hold to, right? Regardless of someone has been here for twenty years or two months, right? I mean, that's our role and responsibility. And if it comes down to decision that is denied and appealed and goes to city council, then so be it. The decision that we make here that's not appealed, then so be it. Decision moves forward. But it, we have that responsibility without looking to say, how can we protect those who were elected? That, that's not our role, and that's not the way we should be looking to make decisions. I think that's the wrong precedent, and certainly the wrong, undemocratic thing to look at things. That's my opinion, sir. So now, having said that, I will go back and ask you to speak again.
It's, uh, thank you, and that's a, a good explanation of your position. I don't think, it's not specifically because it's going to be appealed to the city council. I think it's a multitude of things, one being that, um, you know, this guy can operate every day of the week at one forty-five. I think either, either, either way we go about this, I think he's gonna be back here submitting it. Um, and whether we tell him one thirty or one forty-five, he's gonna be back, and it's gonna be one thirty, and it's gonna hurt him in the long run. I honestly feel that. I honestly feel that if we agree, hey, one thirty, we're gonna deny this today, he's gonna withdraw, he'll be back in two thousand twenty. And probably spend more money, and probably be caught up in bureaucracy and whatever else. Um, I think that hurts the business owner.
That's not our role to decide.
I understand that, but I think he's doing a, he's going to do a disservice to himself by doing that. And the reason I, I kinda changed my opinion is because, and I hate to say that, but I think that I'm helping him by doing this, because I think if, if I stick with the one thirty and we deny him now, he's gonna go back, he's gonna come back and say, I have to resubmit anyway, this is my business, and it's gonna wind up costing him more money, and it's time and everything else. But he's currently operating at one forty-five. That's his operation, uh, uh, his hours of operation, number one. Number two, uh, Miguel made a very, very good point, and that is that he is the only straight nightclub in the city of Downey. Um, we pulled another nightclub and they were, um, they were one thirty, but they were a restaurant. And that had a lot to do with my, uh, my decision as well, is that we pulled that information while we were in a meeting and, you know, he is the only full nightclub, uh, in the city of Downey. Um, with that said, I think that was important, that he's the only nightclub, and he's not serving food and drinks and steaks, uh, to make, uh, the difference. Um, so that's my position. I think it's, uh, I think it helps him, and I think, um, you know, some of the conditions we put on there were important, and to be very clear, it is a C U P. And it's not, you know, the Police Department can't change it, nobody can change it. This commission can change it. So, if something happens-
Talk to us.
Right. If something happens, it's in our hands to change it. So, you know, it's a great responsibility. And I respect the fact that he's a business owner, um, and we're, I think it'll help him at the end of the day. And it's not, it'll help him more than it will be a detriment to the city of Downey. I think that's the best way to explain it.
Okay.
My position.
Vice Chairman Duarte?
You know, I, I don't, I don't wanna beat a dead horse in terms of stuff I said before, but I think the one thing that I wanted to speak to my fellow commissioners about, um, 'cause I heard, uh, my commissioners asked this, is it, you know, you wanna help understand what the business is like? You know, I'm not club age anymore, but I'm not that far removed. And so just from my experience, um, I would never go to a club before ten o'clock. Uh, I would never probably go in a club before eleven o'clock. Uh, that's just the way things work. If you like, listen to the radio, uh, promos, you know, they always say, everybody before ten thirty, you're in free, because nobody gets there at that time. So with this experience, so this is getting into the fifteen minutes, is that, is, you know, usually you get there about eleven thirty, um, maybe even midnight, eleven. So, you know, there is the, the time period for, uh, a nightclub, the pure nightclub, i- is, is not too lengthy. It's not a supper club where you, you get there at six o'clock, you eat, it turns into a, a nightclub. Um, and at one thirty, you can eat. This is simply like maximizing dancing time. Um, which, if you go into a pure nightclub, that's what you go to do, is, uh, to dance. So, um, you know, i- in terms of the fifteen minutes, I, I understand kinda where they're coming from. In a sense, it's not, you know, revenue, they're gonna sell, you know, coffee, uh, you know, water, things of that nature. It's just the, the extended time to do what you go specifically for a nightclub to do, and the dance, which is in conformity with other clubs, not in Downey, because again, it's the only club in Downey, but in Los Angeles, downtown. So in terms of the experience, I, I do think it's important, um, it's just not, you know, fifteen minutes seems very minimal. Fifteen minutes, when you take it off, and now if you're getting there at eleven thirty, uh, twelve o'clock, you know, you're there for less than two hours um, to do what you're, you know, primarily going to do. So, you know, with that, and I think the point was made already, is it, you know, if we don't grant them one forty-five, you know what they get? One forty-five. Um, and in exchange, what we're getting is a facade that's gonna beautify the Firestone area. Um, I know that some of those businesses that have been vacant, I think there's a camera shop there before, uh, Mighty's Wine Bar. You know, they, they have the clear glass and there's like graffiti or people sketching in them. So I, you know, I think, uh, we're gaining something in terms of, of, in terms of this, and that's a, you know, the facade of the DB Lounge is very nice. Um, so we're getting a little more uniformity in that, uh, a better, a better just, uh, structural, uh, appearance on Firestone. Um, so I think, I think we're actually gaining, uh, something by approving them. And again, I think their business is, is is the, just, the huge distinction is, again, is that this is not a place where they can sell food at one thirty and people silver up with like, you know, empanadas, hot wings, or whatever. It's, uh, at that point, um, you know, they don't, they're not selling any of that. So that, that's why I think it's crucial for their business. Uh, and, you know, that's kind of my point there. I don't know if I've convinced anybody else, but, uh, you know, the, just with my, I just wanted to put in my experience of, uh, a couple of years back of how, you know, how I thought a nightclub should be run or, or, or things of that nature, so that's-
Thank you.
All meddying.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Fermenta, would you like to add anything or say anything?
Very brief. I don't need to add, and more of it has been already, um, said by Commissioner Duarte, which I, I am in agreement with him. Um, this applicant is, plain and simple, just doing a remodel. I don't see the reason to, uh, modify his hours when we're, nothing is being presented to us, that there's been criminal activities or excessive, uh, complaints from the Police Department to us to cut their hours or put them in some sort of a restriction. What they're doing is beautifying a facade and improving their facility. That's all I see that is being, um, presented. We don't approve this, then it stays exactly how it is today. No changes. I and no improvements. I don't feel that we should stop this from occurring just for those fifteen minutes. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, well, it's clear there's, there's three, so let's go ahead and remove that, uh, um, C U P stipulation there, Crystal. And could you please read to us the ones we have currently, the photometrics, crowd controls, security guard specifics, and the architectural change so that we can vote on it?
Condition twelve will be revised to read the site shall remain in conformance with this request and the approved set of plans. Specifically, elevations proposed on sheet A dash three point one on plan date stamped June twenty seventh, two thousand nineteen. This includes completion and final sign-off of building permits for new restrooms in southwest, southwest portion of the building. There will be a new condition added stating a photometric plan must be included as part of the plan check submittal. The illumination plan must clearly indicate all parking access areas will provide adequate lighting for safety of patrons and the surrounding area. The outdoor areas along Firestone and Lorena must be included as part of the photometric plan. Condition fourteen, I, I'm sorry, a new condition will be added, um, that will read customer queuing at Firestone Boulevard shall be kept against the building and shall not block ADA accessibility on the public sidewalk. The use of a temporary queue lined rope is permitted, subject to the approval of the Planning Division and Police Department. Additionally, there will be a modification to condition number forty-six. Uh, the second line of the condition will be revised to read, a minimum of fifteen security guards must be provided and may be increased or decreased as the chief of police determines is necessary.
Okay, thank you for reading those. Uh, may I have a motion to accept the, uh, C U P? Uh, and with the amendment changes?
Motion to adopt Pillin, uh, nineteen dash zero zero one zero five with the conditions added, um, by the city planner, Crystal.
May I have a second? May I have a second?
The vote is now open?
Second, we did, okay. We did, okay.
It's real slow.
Yeah.
There it is. Okay, the motion passes with four in favor and Commissioner Owens absent to approve PLN nineteen zero zero one zero five conditional use permit with modified conditions as stated.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, let's move on to, um, um, number PLN dash one nine dash zero zero one five five. Um, will the director, I'm sorry, does the secretary approve publication?
Yes, we do.
Will the Director of Community Development introduce staff making the presentation?
Thank you, Chairman Dominguez. Tonight, we have Crystal Landavazo, our city planner, to make the presentation.
Good evening. Tonight, we have a zone text amendment proposed before you. The zone text amendment is triggered through the adoption of a new state senate bill number two, three, four. To large family daycare uses in residential zones throughout the state. Um, what you'll see before you is a lot of text that is stricken out. The planning commission will remember, uh, fairly recently, there was a large family daycare use that was brought before you. This section with all of the strike throughs through it is the section that we were citing in regard to our ability to review, um, these uses in regard to the traffic, the noise, and all of the other items that we spent a great deal of time, um, reviewing and, and discussing. All of that has been taken out in the new legislation. There is legislation in there to further clarify that, um, large family daycare uses are now to be treated exactly as small family daycare uses are. They're automatically allowed. The city is not able to apply any business license regulations, any zoning regulations, and they are automatically permitted in the, in any residential zone. As such, the ordinance amendments that are before you tonight are reflective of the new state legislation. This is a cleanup item for us so that our code is consistent with the new regulation that will be taking effect on January first. All, um, references to a minor conditional use permit or any review by the city is removed. And that concludes staff's report. I'm available for any questions.
We would never see a presentation for a daycare.
That's correct.
Commissioners, Spathos, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions, no comments. Well, is there a limit on the number at all?
Four, I'm sorry, nine to fourteen is what they consider a large family daycare.
No, no, on actual daycares.
On the actual number of daycares, there is no.
Hundred, two hundred, you could have five hundred in the city?
There is no limitation.
Jesus.
Um, Crystal, uh, there's, they took away the, um, ability to put spacing?
That's correct. So all, all regulation. We had a provision that a thousand foot separation was required. That provision is removed as well.
Commissioner Fermetta? Any questions, comments? Vice Chairman Duarte?
Um, you know, just, I guess, one is, is this a provisional time, or is?
It's, it, no, it's, it's the new legislation. The state, um, defined that there is a crisis for these types of uses, so they removed the obstacle that they felt was in the way of those uses.
Wow, okay.
Thank you very much.
We saw something similar with the ADUs.
Yeah.
They kind of, uh, took it away from cities and, it's the way you're gonna do it, same.
Okay, so, um, is there any pre-hearing discussions from any of the commissioners? Commissioner Spathos? Commissioner Fermetta?
No.
Commissioner Duarte?
No.
Negative for me. There is no applicant, except Newsen, he's not here.
In a public hearing to get public comment on the proposed change, and then close it, and then take your action.
Anybody in the audience wish to come forward and speak in favor or opposition of the zone text changes? Okay. Um, PLN dash one nine dash zero zero one is now closed. Um, what is the pleasure of the commission? Any discussion? Commissioner Spathos? Commissioner Duarte?
No discussion.
Commissioner Fermetta?
I don't think there's anything to discuss.
Um, may I have a motion?
Motion. Pass.
Accept.
Accept.
Second.
Right.
Any business to get into?
Okay, go roll call Mary, please.
Commissioner Fermetta?
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioner Spathopoulos?
Hi.
Vice Chair Duarte?
Abstaining.
And Chair Dominguez?
Hi.
Okay, the motion passes to adopt a resolution of approval, thereby adopting PLN nineteen dash zero zero one five five, zone text amended, amendment, with three in favor. Uh, Vice Chair Duarte abstaining, and Commissioner Owens absent.
Thank you, Mary. So now it's time for non-agenda public comments. This portion provides an opportunity for the public to address the planning commission, items which on jurisdiction of planning commission, and is not listed on the agenda. As requests may require that you state your name and address on such a matter upon which you speak. Until the Brown Act, no discussion or action, other than brief response for all the city managers, etc. Council staff will schedule for subsequent agenda shall be taken by the planning commission, or any issue brought forth under this section. Is there anybody in the audience which would step forward and speak? Okay, we're now moving on consent calendar. Um, does any commissioner or anybody wish to speak on consent calendar? Commissioners, may I have a motion?
I was, uh, I was not present for the August twenty-first, uh, meeting. Actually, I was flying that night.
So you have not reviewed the minute, the video or anything other you want to abstain?
We have, we have enough votes. If he abstains, we have three votes to approve him.
Okay, got it. Anything else? Okay. So may I have a motion to approve consent calendar items and block?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mary. A voice roll call, Mary.
Commissioner Fermetta?
Hi.
Commissioner Spathopoulos?
Hi.
Vice Chair Duarte?
Hi.
And Chair Dominguez.
Hi. Okay. Um, do we have any other new business, or does any commissioner have any business to discuss? Commissioner Spathos?
None.
Commissioner Fermetta?
None.
Vice Chair Duarte?
None, thank you.
Okay. Does the Director of Community Development have any additional comments?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. On Monday, December ninth, at six thirty PM at the Columbia Memorial Space Center, uh, the city is hosting a housing resource fair. Uh, the resources will be there to help folks with rent mitigation, with landlord mitigation, with any homeless, uh, services that they need, and any other housing services. That includes my update.
Thank you very much. We are now adjourned.